We go uh to the stage for the program.
All LGUs are invited, right? All the municipalities and the two cities?
Yes, your honor, all, all mayors are enjoin to, to join us. Mayors and their officers. Uh, pwede rin ng mga ano nila constituents and officials. So on September one also, we will have a celebrity concert and the grand fireworks uh display at the Capitol grounds also.
Nana'y magperform uh sa band or who?
Uh, yes, your honor, we're trying to get uh O Karaga. And well, we're trying to get four, four performers for the concert. Si O Karaga, si Don Petop. Uh, P-pop group named Kalista and naad nae surprise na frontak.
Surprise dili itong secretary ni Elias. Secretary, I mean manager na'to secretary.
Uh, we were lucky. We were lucky sa El- Elias. So moving on po, um, we will be having a shooting competition at the Malay Balay Gun Club Shooting Range for a third brigade on September thirteen and fourteen.
I'm just curious, uh, kani shooting na'to open to the public? Pwede sila mo join or by clubs?
Um, at this moment po, it's open, it's open.
Individual groups or club or?
Yes, po.
Uh, yes, board member, Ibang Dista.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, I am the uh in charge of this shooting competition. Uh, sir.
Yes, board.
Nagrequest ko nga i-move to September twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Kay ang permit, uh, permit to hold shooting competition, wala na approve on thirteen, fourteen.
Oh.
So, dito sa September twenty-seven to twenty-eight. Um, orag nagparisiko glitter ga hapon?
Ah, wala. Uh, eh, eh, doesn't uh, we're not ano naman, sir. We can move it to those dates.
Kinaan naman tag-permit sa FEO.
Yes, po.
For an exclusive, so ang approved uh date is on September twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Ay, okay, board, sige po, we will.
Open, open sa tanan na siya, open.
What's important is na po siya sa September. Part sa foundation.
Foundation, foundation month na'to. And of course, uh, we were trying to get uh Sabo, Filipina, but we have not been able to get any organizer, maybe.
Ay, managdagan mag, magvolunteer ano iba. Anyway, Sir June, dali rakan na, now that na nakita to sa live karoon, dagan kay manduol sa inyo diya karoon.
Yes, your honor. So, uh, this sums up po our, our proposed activities for the foundation day.
Yes, uh, Tony Monsanto.
Can we, hello, my guest, can we go over first as to the, the, the theme, the theme? Ang tema po. What's the, okay, empowering generations and sustaining legal legacy. May we know if we have uh proposed as one of the activity, the job fair?
Oh, yes, po, um, Governor Roque has.
Yes, yes, this has been the concern of uh then board member Beltran, that we have several activities yet. The job fair is one of those activities that is being left behind. Now, this time, may we know if we can have, since this is empowering generations, of course, part of empowering our generations is to give them work. So if we could schedule also a job fair, that would be better. We can invite some of the investors, maybe to open uh some job opportunities for our constituents in the province.
Yes, po, board, we will be coordinating with the peso closely on that.
And then, one more, I'll see. Uh, one more thing also, can we go over the, the activities, schedule activities? This will run for the whole month of, I don't know, beginning of the last week of August. August up to probably the end of September.
Yeah, yes, po.
Can, do we already have a budget on each of the event?
Um, we do, your honor, but uh we don't have the.
Sir Butch, please, approach uh.
Yes, uh, board, actually, uh, total budget of uh foundation day is nine million. Uh, so nine million, nine, nine million is distributed to all the activities.
Yes, may, may we know, may we know, uh, the specific budget on each of the activities?
Um, your honor, if I may. Um, yung, ang atong concert, at least in the volleyball exhibition game, um, will have a budget of two million each.
Two million each?
Ah, po.
Now, in the volleyball, we, we are paying, we're giving incentives to those national volleyball players we have invited.
Yes, po.
How much would that?
We're paying uh.
How much would that be?
Um, range po from two hundred to three hundred each.
Two hundred to three hundred each. How many games they're going to play, one game?
Um, no, po, uh, we, we are proposing that they play five games.
Five games, okay, thank you very much. In two days yun ba, two days, two days atong.
Uh, one day lang, board, one day lang ang exhibition game and demo.
Yeah, okay. The, these national volleyball players will be handling the demo.
Yes, po.
And the participants?
Our locals, po.
Participants are local?
Yes, po, our local players.
Thank you very much, so they are uh being budgeted at two hundred to three hundred thousand each.
Yes, po.
That includes accommodation or excluding accommodations?
Um, the whole budget of two million, package na po.
Uh, package, okay.
The plane fare, the, the, their transportation, their hotels, lahat po is ano na, package na sa two million.
But they have not given yet the names of those celebrities or national players.
Uh, review ka lang po, board.
That includes Pablo and.
Myla Pablo po, ay, ito po. Uh. Um, Mitch Morente po, Myla Pablo, Morente. Um, uh, they're, they're going to be playing an open, open position. I'm not really well versed sa volleyball. Ang opposite position will be played by Lori Bernardo and Kate Santiago. Middle blockers will be Mitch Gamit and Majoy Baron. Setter will be Kyle Negrito. Libero will be Kyla Achenza. Uh, Thotz Carlos will also be there and a sub in the person of Pangs Panaga.
Thank you very much for the information, so the, the volleyball and the, the, the concert was that? Budgeted at two million each?
Ah, po, yes, board.
The, the rest of the activities are also given the budget? What are the other activities? Ah, okay.
Uh, the fireworks display po is around one, one M.
One M?
Ah, po.
Okay. So the total budget is nine million?
Yes, your honor. It's the same budget as last year.
Last year.
Ah, po, and we have not uh increased the budget.
What if we will include not one of the activity mentioned here, uh, the one I'm proposing, the job fair? What if we will also include the job fair? Can we still include that in the nine million budget?
I think so, po, sa true peso, I think we can include naman. Uh, we have a, uh, lalo na po kung hindi pa matuloy 'yung sabong.
Ah, nana. Ah, na, nana'y nagvolunteer rin sa yun, no? Wala, naginag, ten minutes.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, your honor.
Yes, uh, board member, kasi nabi.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Sir Cruz, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, po.
Clarification for the fan run, nabatay registration ano? Muna ang gimention ni Gob last convocation nga libre ang t-shirt, pero kami bayad sa registration.
Yes, po, uh, ma, your honor, napoy registration. I think it's around three hundred fifty, we, we have an organizer na kausap for this, but yun nga, we're working on the number of shirts na i-free nigo. Kay if you order from the organizer, it's also another three hundred fifty. But uh.
So the, the province will shoulder the.
Um, we are try, also trying to get some budget from the nine million that we have to, to shoulder some of that, but uh I think.
How many, how many have you targeted ng kuwan?
Na shirts?
Na shirts.
From around seven hundred po to one thousand na shirts.
So, pilaka kilometers ang?
Um, the longest distance na'to sa fan run is ten K, ten kilometers po. But there's three and there's five kilometers.
Okay, so, do we have mga, Sir Cruz, mga invited, who will be our invited guests during sa atong program? Do we have?
Sa.
Program na'to?
On September one.
Yes.
Ma'am, um, our local officials po.
So wala tay invited from national?
Ah, wala, wala po, wala.
So within lang sa province?
Yes, ma'am, I, I think uh previously also, we have not uh invited from national except for senator mix.
That's all, thank you, sir.
Yes, uh, Tony Garcia, please recognize.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if it was announced earlier, but this September one declared a holiday?
Yes, it was.
Uh, the entire province of Bukinon?
Yes, po, uh, the entire province, um.
Signed by the president.
It's already a regular holiday.
Ah, it's a regular.
Ah, po, it's, we did not request it anymore, yes, po.
Uh, Sir June, uh, Tony Monsanto, thank you for bringing that up. Katung job fair kay ako raba ang chair sa manpower and labor, no? Cause I remember, Sir June, three or four years ago, we also conducted a job fair at the Falk Arts. If my memory serves me right.
Sige, board, uh, we, we, we're, we'll coordinate closely po.
Please, honey, po.
Ah, sige po, yes, po.
Thank you in advance. So anymore, yes, board member, Babijay, dila yan.
May hapon, uh, since naamantay mga activity, uh, karoon katapusan until last uh sep, sa katapusan sa September. But uh, we have a civil service, di ba mo conflict sa atong mga kalihukan sa civil service?
Um, we have taken into account, board, ang atong mga activities for the civil service month uh, do not conflict with our schedule for the fond- foundation day activities. Thank you.
And also what I heard is ang schedule na'to sa games uh civil service is after office hours, right?
Yes, po, and I think um they requested, the athletes also requested nga medyo free day ang Friday para maka-practice.
And the games itself?
Yes, po.
That's good, that's good. So anymore, curious to our invited visitors? Board, board member Malondin dila yan, okay na. How about Sir, Sir Butch, nakaidugang gamay?
Uh, Mr. Chair, na sa flow, uh, ako in charge sa pagpresenta na, right after this one.
Ah, okay, okay. I guess Sir Butch will be next after Sir June.
Uh, maybe uh, iputan ko sa record, uh, I don't know if si, ang right person ba ang mo, atong guest mo, answer niyang query, oh, for a record, Mr. Chairman, if, do we have an ordinance already granting the uh incentives to our uh winners or the title holders of the pageant? Because uh, we have uh an activity, the Miss World Bukinon, so this is the first time, first time that uh we are the one sponsor this activity. So, the, the copy siya, so ako lang iput on the record nga, ang ganis yang ordinance ko naabani siya kay momaning, atong i-recognition atong mga moma, mananaw, in recognition of their achievements and contribution to our province kay usapod, namatay bagod ko ni dawg sa Miss Philippine Earth Ecotourism.
Ah, po.
So ako ng, kay, anyway, ako maipasa niya po ng resolution, ako lang gi-recode answer nga naabataan na din para pod ma, ma cluster down sa atong secretariat. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, board member, Malondin dila yan. Sir Butch, board member, it's your turn.
Okay, before I proceed, uh, greetings for our presiding officer, Honorable Mario Albarice. Uh, to our team, San Naguliyang Palalawigan members and to all the visitors, good uh afternoon. So it's a uh gratitude nga may invite me, no, to present the programs and activities uh sa foundation day and of course, that's a tourism office. So let's proceed for the program flow for the foundation day. So we have part one and part two. So sa part one, this is will be happen uh magsogo dito sa pine hills up to this capital, so na na sequence and right after ano is, we have the part two. So ang part two usual na nanig, kahit tabo, uh, amo lang uh gina-request all the is, uh, board members, uh, your presence during the flag racing. No, uh, together with sa katokang, pag-race sa atong provincial flag with provincial hymn, uh, si Honorable Ryo P. uh Roque, ang atong mag-race na, o si Honorable Clyde De Kinyo, na dayon sa side ang atong uh board members. Then right after that, uh, i-sit back, then message ni uh Gob, then uh, diha na tama, mo reto pagkagabihin na tay concert, and ang atong attire is it Nick attire?
Uh, Sir Butch, nalaki pumunta na, uh, Governor O'Neil will be delivering his speech dini sa, in fact, sa Capitolia or mabalik pa dito sa.
Dito sa.
Sa ground.
Ground, sa Sentinel Stage. Kay naman sa Tiger prepared then itong mga food for all, para sa tuwa sa itong atis. So, as invited para ma-present ang sales in common collections and including the statistics during kamulan. So sa kamulan na'to, we nakuha namo data from twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. This is our kamulan collection from our sponsors and both trade, uh, rents. Sa twenty twenty-three, we have two million and one hundred thousand. Twenty twenty-four, nine hundred fifty-two thousand and that just this year, uh, naka-collect ang four million nine hundred sixty-five sa atong sponsors and rent sa atong mga booth.
Congratulations.
And source na'to ano is ang PTO. Okay, next, miss? Next. And for the kamulan sales, from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five, nag-increase dito sa twenty twenty-two, sales from concessioners, so nagkita si dawg six hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred thirty-two. Pagka-twenty twenty-three, we have twenty-four million, four hundred thirty-five, five hundred twenty-four point fifty. Pagka-twenty twenty-four, sixty million, three hundred ninety-five and seven hundred five point twenty-seven. And just this year, during kamulan na'to, nag-inka mga ato mga concessioners of eighty-six million, five hundred seventy-four and five hundred ninety-nine point, uh, five five thousand seventy-four, five hundred ninety-nine point ninety-four. So, ang DTI source na'to and DTI since they are the one in charge to gather all the uh data.
That's good news, kay at least they can nabuhay sa atong mga, mga sponsors.
Yes, so that means yun da, daghan atong visita yun na, kay daghan manang ahon.
Yes, Tony Monsanto?
Thank you for the uh data presented to us, sir, thank you sa atong incomes sa kamulan. And we go back to that for twenty twenty-five, katung income, please. Income four million.
Balik, kamay, balik.
Katung income, please, uh, four million, okay, four million nine hundred sixty-five, mo kanasyan nagsulod sa tuang ah, sa, sa trust fund siya, not on our, canang, sa atong income, general income na'to, na. Sa trust fund, git siya, board. Okay, aside from the kamulan activities, mga mga specific, do we have a, a data as to the income for the province of Bukinon as far as our tourism is concerned? Uh, regarding po sa income, uh, we don't have data yet, uh, miss, uh, board. Since uh partly na siya sa, usana siya sa training, nga among i-conduct this coming September sa advanced training statistics on how to collect uh regarding the expenditure or the expenditure of the tourist. So as of now, we don't have data yet. Kaya nga atong mga ganda na is, uh, balagwa tay amount na moabot sa ato sa province, at least we have the data even from the LGUs, di ba? Kay every LGUs naaman ilahang mga tourism nga kuwan, just, just the data siguro, like, for example, ginapanghambog sa impasugo nga, they have been earning millions sa ilahang tourism kuwan, ito just the data siguro. Kay if I remember right, Mr. Chair, when we first, ah, sa primerong na'tong term, na kunterm as board member, there was that uh, Dr. Yasai, who was our speaker during the Ella, nga nagmention siya nga, ang ato ko nung data sa Bukinon, atong tourism income, wa kaabot ko one million, ingong ganis i-close na na inyo tourism? Bah, kay, anong wa kaabot ko na that much? So siguro, uh, not necessarily, ang income would go directly to the, to the province, but at least it will go to the LGO. Kuhaon lang na'to ang data, no, para, para also po makita na'to, if there is a need for us to make legislations, no, para maka-legislate kita, para mapromote, mapromote paginata ang atong tourism as far as the entire province of Bukinon is concerned. So siguro po siya, no, if we can have that data, sa atong mga LGO, maconsolidate na'to, at least kita po dini sa, sa province, dini, in particular, dini sa Sangkoniyang Palalawigan, uh, dun na po kita'y data nga, ika-present po. Kung na mag, mag-ella na'ta nga, this is also one of the sector sa ato ang province that needs also support through legislations. So, Mr. Chair, thank you very much to that.
Thank you, Tony Monsanto. Yes, board member, Babijay, dila yan.
Okay, so kini atong in a collections, uh, during may gini sa kamulan?
Yes, yes, board.
Na siya, uh, kinibong, I believe nga that, uh, in our premises, nga income naman tab, example sa atong QOT, namatay paabang din ano, namatay bayad ang magamit, and of course, atong uh Sentinel Stage, uh, naagya po na siya eh, uh, paabang, di ba, brag, uh, if I am right, nga na siya abang atong uh Sentinel Stage?
Ah, yes, yes, board, na.
Okay, so, uh, aman ka pa, wala sa napil sa collections dya, wala sa napil dyan.
Wala sa napil, uh, we have si, uh, separate uh data regarding for that.
Okay, so, siguro, um, gusto po namumaybaw ano, uh, apat to payman na atong income sa atong, uh, kay di man na siya during kamulan, whole year round man na siya, so siguro, gusto po namumaybaw ano, kasa deep po'to na ang pundo na butang.
Noted, noted, board.
Thank you.
Ang pasabot ni ator, uh, ni board member, katung abang sa spaces, siguro, atong se- rental sa itong mga kubo and everything. Ah, apil, apil ang Sentinel Stage siya, okay.
Anyway, uh, board, during uh Monday convocation, uh, we are the one uh in charge sa this coming September, September? So siguro mapresenta na mo, uh, this time lang is kanira mong i-present since uh more, uh, sa base invitation is uh more say.
Updating, yes.
Uh, the update lang for kamulan, but for the income is wala siya, so.
This coming Saturday.
This coming uh first Monday convocation, we will present all the, the data regarding for the income for the tourism.
Yes, board member, PTO is recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, comment na ho gamay sa twenty twenty-four, kay ako raba'y chairman sa events, ano eh. Natingala lang ko sa collections para trust fund, kay ang nine hundred fifty-two thousand, sa booth alone, nineteen ka-booth sa front, that's fifty thousand per booth, nine hundred fifty thousand, nadaan to. So, uh, pakias na sa PTO, ganong kanira, report sa booth siya, kay daghan na makita ng mga booth na'to, diya, kanira atong collection sa, para, para sa trust fund nga ano, uh, sponsorship.
Yes, board.
Sa update lang, natiara lang, gina ko, para maggamay na kayo, sa daghan magta-booth. Daghan magdonate, anyway.
We'll try to ask the PTO, board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And then, last na dito, ang Monday con, uh, first Monday convocation would be dili one, di ba? Eight na, ah, okay, ako lang klaro, Mr. Chair, will na.
September eight will be our Monday convocation for September.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. May I proceed?
Yeah, please, Sir Butch.
So for the tourism statistics uh report, I think uh Mr. Kizado is not around, kay na siya sa elangas, uh, kuwan, technical. Okay, so for tourist arrivals from twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, twenty-four and twenty-five. So sa domestic, we have hundred sixty-four thou, a hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-eight. And sa twenty twenty-two, we have three hundred thirty-eight and thousand, six hundred seventy-nine. Twenty twenty-three is four hundred sixty thousand, nine hundred fifty-one. And twenty twenty-four is four thousand, uh, four thousand, four hun, uh, forty-five, three hundred seven. Then as of June, uh, since ang mga LGU is wala panahuman lang submission, we have already ninety-one thousand and a zero thirty-seven. So as of June, na siya na data sa twenty-two, twenty twenty-one na'to, sa domestic. Wa, pa manahuman atong end, so kay a quarter limang gudang atong submissions atong statistics. Then for foreign, birita ni Taas karoon, ang sa foreign as of June, nandaan, na natay one, one thousand thirty. So, baseline na'to nga data is the twenty twenty-one, which is hundred percent. So sa percentage niya, ni Obusta sa twenty twenty-five kay June pa man siya, but dito sa foreign is we have four hundred forty, four point ninety-seven percent, based na'to sa twenty twenty-one. As of June pa na siya, so ni Taas ta sa atong foreign sa tourist arrival. Then sa same day, by the way, katung tourist arrival na'to is katotoos yang kakatulog staying overnight. Unlike any same day visitor, is mo nis yang kapangad to sa atong mga tourist destinations. So, sa twenty twenty-one, we have two thousand, two hundred twenty-four and three hundred sixty-five. Then sa twen, as twenty twenty-two, six forty, twen, uh, two one nine. And sa twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, dito tanidag sa daghan tagbisita. Then as of June, we have already five hundred fifty-one, nine hun, uh, nine hundred twenty-eight. And sa foreign na'to is same, ni Saka si Agyapon, based na'to sa twenty twenty-one, we have already three thousand, four hundred eighty-seven. So, kung atong kaon yang percentage based na'to sa twenty twenty-one, we have one hundred forty-five point ninety-nine percent increase sa domestic and one thousand, five hundred ninety-two point seventy-one percent sa atong foreign.
Sir Butch, including na ang kamulan, ano 'yung mga visitors?
Ang sakab.
The previous years, yes, including na.
Yes, including sa this, in, sa kuwan daw, uh, ang data magunato sa Malay Balay, uh, Mr. Chair, is separate ang ilang submissions sa DUT.
Ah, subject.
That we're trying to ask, nga dapat musabit sila sa, di ba, kay consolidation na'to is whole Bukinon man, dili man, a big part man, git sa't sila. But the data also, derisad na'to, is di na'to makuha ang data during sa kamulan.
That includes, excludes, I mean. Yes, board member, board member.
Sir Butch, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Um, untsay, untsay, kini pinakataas nga municipalities, ang naidaghan, ano eh, nakay, as to the detail of this?
Yes, na sa next slide na po, board, actually, uh, gikuha lang namo ang top five nga mga distributor, git. Okay, sa top five LGUs in tourist arrivals sa twenty twenty-four, based at twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, wala namo nakuha. Manolo Fortits is siyagi naguna. One hun, uh, one hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-one, Valencia City, Dayon, Maramag, Malay Balay, and Kitautau. That's for staying overnight nga mga bisita na'to.
Sir Butch, regarding on kining ilahang data nagi-submit sa inyo and some other municipalities, naagya po na sila?
Yes, yes, Board, naagya po.
Ah, mula na inyong ikuha, ning.
Gikuha lang top 5 namo.
Ang top 5 lang? Ah, okay.
Then next, LGU same-day visitors, same, ang Manolo Fortiz, tugod na sa ilang dahilan, na mo sila, sila may, of course, distributor yet sa atong, uh, same-day visitor, ni Aboslag, 6,089, 365, Impasugong, Maramag, Don Carlos, Tangkagan. Nawala na sila, na sila sa Obos, sa top 10 siya, so far, ang mag-ikuha lang sa is top 5. Yes, Maramag. Tugod na is mga area nga gabsitahan yet. Ang kanige, uh, board, kanila lang Don Carlos, board, is kuwan, kuwan naga rin ini ng data sa Lake Rock.
Sa Lake.
Lake Rock na siya.
Lake Apo na siya, Lake Apo.
Lake, uh, dili sa Pinamalo Lake.
Ah, Pinamalo.
Ang kanila Don Carlos. Tangkagan, we have lots of, ano naman, destinations dito sa Tangkagan, daghan na karoon, uh, potential nila, daghan na existing.
Great, thank you and mabuhay.
Thank you so much, Sir Butch and Sir June for the updating, for, ah, yes, uh, Attorney Garcia.
Nagwonder ko sa arrival sa foreigner, apilang mga taga campki baritan na lang Amerikaner.
Wag mo times 5, siguro na.
Ay, dunwa.
Wala na napil sa data pa.
Wala pa napil sa data, okay, okay, I was just joking, uh, nakulat si, ano eh, silang, uh, these are, you started collecting 2021 man, di ba? The data, would I be correct?
Yes.
Nah, 2021. So maybe ato only encourage you the LGUs to make proper reporting, kaya aron may exacto sa dangatong data, kaya garbage in, garbage out, di ba? Come on, you just get the data from your counterparts at the LGU level, correct?
Yes, Board.
So say ha, tag morpo inyong is what? And then morpo na is a bit na to dito sa?
Department of Tourism.
Department of Tourism, sige, sige, so, do we have an ordinance on this matter?
Mr. Chair, we have in, in fact crafted the tourism code.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the last, uh, during the last term, at the last 27. I don't know if your task, that was already completed, because, because we still have to require some datas.
So wala pa ma, pa sito.
The tourism code, we have only, uh.
Napupilito na ba to?
Well, part na siya, Board, sa kuwan yet, ang submission of sa tourism data yet.
So the, the tourism code is already adopted by the Sanggoyan?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, kaya na, 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 na tong composition, di ba? We are talking on the composition, di ba?
Yes, Po.
Uh, pero as far as the code itself, mura na pati mga data that has to be. Alright. Na, na approve na tong, poragwa, poragwa pa?
A committee hearing po, yeah, yes, yes.
Sige, maybe, maybe it timely also that we include this.
Yeah.
So that, uh, we have, uh, literally like a card on the stick, maybe the stick, kung di mo submit, there must be some, ano, sanction siguro.
Yes.
Uh, aron, aron mga kuwan lang, submit good kaya Sir Butch or sa Provincial Tourism Office for consolidation of the data.
Yes.
Okay, so I would suggest you watch out also for the Malitbog, kas, itong ilang paragliding site, kaya daghang foreigners ito. No? Uh, basi, kuwan lang, rimay, kuwan lang ang tourism officer sa, sa Malitbog, na i-record lang niya.
Daghan, daghan na sila to.
Mr. Chair, may I, uh, suggest?
Yes, Sir Butch.
Actually, some of the LGUs or the other provinces, uh, kaya ikuha nila, penalty nila ang mga destinations and, and hotels, nga during, sa pag di mo report is during sa ilang, pag-register nila sa ilang kuwan, diha nila, so partly mo ginailang yun na butang.
Okay, if I remember, part of the ordinance being drafted is, uh, kinangan magpamembro yuka. Accreditation, kaya i-tabalo ko na, daghan mga spots nga, delete, magpay-balo.
Yeah, kala siguro mag-apply water rise, Mr. Chair, ato sang ikuwan, nagpa-acredit, labi na tong mga resort, kung nagpa-acredit na ba sa tourism. Yeah, because aron, ma-consolidate sa na to, kaya while we grant them the water, the, the, we help assist them in securing water permit, and yet, diligan niya siya registered or accredited sa ilang LGU, no? Maybe we can do a check on that to help, uh, tourism now. My other question is, uh, how, how do they do the reporting? The paper and the pen lang ihapon and submit to basically? Or do you have already a digital way of?
Digital na mostly.
Okay, so how, 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 how di karabao, uh, how would you, how would you receive this? Your office or through mess, text message? Through a Facebook?
Through, uh, emails.
Ah, so they email it to you, how many freak, how's the frequency? Every arrival, every week, every month?
Quarterly ang submission nila.
Ah, quarterly, so they submit to you, and then your staff will read the email and put it in the, ano, so semi-automatic, ay?
Yes, Po, na, there's somebody nga mo, encode lang yapon sa, kaya ang data is kuwan pa man. Uh, although template na siya sa ilang agikan, but up to province is kinangan pagit sa encode, pero, nakatemplate yapon bro, iigo na lang kami input sa ilang output.
Sa ilang output, input ni mo sa imong.
Generate na siya sa whole province.
Oh, then, para sa whole province, but you still have human intervention, kaya we could pa man imong staff. Di ba? So kung absent imong staff o nasayop, nalipat siya, may error yapon, posible, correct?
Yes, Po.
Ah, sige, so that's how you do it, uh, email to provincial tourism, and the staff of the provincial tourism encodes it in a template? And this template will be emailed also to the regional office, okay, and this is done quarterly?
Yes, Po. Then there are also forms nga monthly ang kuwan, delete sila, delete sila, then na, na, um, is semi-annual. So magdepende siya, like example, sa supply data na to is, that is, uh, semi-annual ang pag-submit, supply data.
What do you mean, supply data?
Supply data is, uh, that's the data that they have, for example, how many hotels, how many persons they have, that's the supply data. And the demand data is separate, so that is quarterly the demand data. This data, uh, that we have is, uh, kuwan na, nakuha na to ni sa demand data, so.
So you mean to say, when you say supply data, number of rooms available, the entire province of Bukit Nun?
Yes, Po.
Inana?
Yes, Po.
So how, do we have a total number of rooms in the province of Bukit Nun?
Uh, na sa office, but, uh, we, we don't, pwede mapresent yapon namo.
Bul- ballpark figure, uh, pilak, na nakatay, 5,000 ka kwarto dinis, tibo, probinsya sa Bukit Nun, nga, maritahan.
Uh, delete pasad mga almost 30, kaya ang fine hills nawala, then, they have also lots of hotels nga nag-kuwan na.
So these are hotels and, uh, inns?
Accommodation establishment, Po.
Including Airbnb?
Yes, Po.
So mga 3,000?
Yes, Po.
Entire province of Bukit Nun? Okay, so when you say supply, the demand, kini?
Canisya demand.
Arrivals?
Yes.
Alright, sige, so what, this is done quarterly, uh, supply is anwa, uh, twice a year? What is monthly?
Monthly is, uh, I think DA, I'm not sure, I'm not, uh, ako lay check.
Alright, I would like to ask this question for purposes of study, not necessarily that you have the data. Are you, what are your plans for the opening of the airport in 2027? Uh, do you have projections? Do you have a study already what to do, uh, when the open, the airport opens in 2027?
Wala pa, Board.
Wala pa, so our planning is done on a yearly level only, not on a five-year level?
Uh, hopefully, uh, pag ma-craft na na to atong tourism development plan, siguro ma-include na na to dito sa plan na to.
Okay, are you open to a meeting, uh, for this purpose, to, to analyze the impact of the opening of the airport on the tourism industry of Bukit Nun?
Yes, Po.
Uh, so that we can also advise our local businessman, nga sila'y maguna, kaysa lain businessman ang maguna, tagalagawa sa probinsya? You're open?
Yes, Po.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Uh, additional point, Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh, Attorney Mo Santo.
I appreciate the point raised by Board Member Garcia, and we do hope that that will be included in the tourism code. Because we cannot regulate the businesses coming in unless we have our tourism code. In fact, uh, during the discussion on the first time that we called it in the committee, I was suggesting also that, uh, because I happen to visit one, one tourist, uh, area, when I was not able to go in because, well, I will share. Unya, dirira sa Obos, ang sakay na disud ka makagoin in sa, kuwan, that is why we really wanted to have the tourism code. So that, uh, we could, uh, uh, make regulations also for some hotels to follow, kaya murabag, dunay diskriminasyon ba? Ng, mo, mo bayad, kapag ihapon't magusulod ba, niya muragana ba, no? So that is why, and I do hope we can, uh, we can craft, uh, the tourism code, purposely to have these mga institutions nga nagaserve, no? Makaregister gitsila sa ato, so that they can also pay the corresponding payments, no? And then, of course, they will be following, unya, sa mga rules and regulations na to, kaya basin sa ilang garbage, no? Pag, pag cater nila sa mga customers, and then, the crafting of the tourism code is importante po siya sa airboats, para makakuha sa tag-budget in promoting, no? Kaya na bitong sa airport, pagabot sa airport, na bitong maha tag sa emo, ka tumurag ka ng, what do you call that? Murag leaflet, di ba?
Flyers.
Makita niyo flyers, makita niyo, uy, ano di is ya? Now, if we could also maintain a both in the airport, no, ma-appreciate na to, na pabot na to, ah, niya Bukit Nun, no? Nadinha, mapresent na daan, no? If we can craft this tourism code, and probably we can also provide budget for the promotion of our tourism in Bukit Nun. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Mo Santo, yes, Attorney Garcia.
Mr. Chair, uh, I also, uh, appreciate the, the drive of, uh, Board Member, Mo Santo, to really have this tourism code now. We challenged the Chair of the Committee on Tourism, to call a committee hearing on this, so that we can maybe invite the, the Director of, uh, the, uh, Department of Tourism, because she is more than willing to assist us in the crafting of the plan in relation to the airport, because, dili daw niya gusto mahitabo, ang naitabo sa Lagindingan, nag-operate ng airport, I have pagahimoog mga, uh, plano, I have pag-a-adjust ang local government units. So, so that we can all include, uh, these concerns, so that by as early as next year perhaps, we already have a functional, duly-approved tourism code, so that even the investors will refer to it, and maybe start constructing whatever they want to support the operations of the airport. Secondly, she was also pointing out that unlike, uh, to Lagindingan nga, walay immigration, okay, uh, there are small planes that come in na, na ay mga, uh, puti, mga foreigner nga mulanding. Without immigration and, uh, customs, they have to land in Cebu pa. And besa kang ilang destination ang kagayan di oro, or ang ilang destination Bukit Nun, without an office of the BOC and immigration, kining mga chartered flights, dili makalanding, kaya why mag-process sa ilaha? So these are often, uh, look, uh, mislooked by airport operations. So that's why she said, uh, it's important that we, we have the plan, kaya aron, as I said, uh, if we need more rooms, then businessmen from Bukit Nun can really start building the hotels or inns, whatever, homestays, to cater to the influx of possible more, uh, tourists because of the opening of the airport. And as we know, during the last committee hearing, it now can accommodate jets, di ba? Kaya di increase, the delay is because of the increase of the length of the runway, from 1.8 to 2.3 kilometer, so it can accommodate jets. So I hope the Chair of the Committee on Tourism will, uh, consider all this, so that we can have a, uh, continue, co- committee hearing, because I understand it's already revived last time, this was archived and revived, so we can, uh, schedule this, and invite the necessary personnel, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and just in addition, Sir Butch, no? Uh, timing po kayo, kaya ongoing pang construction sa airport, so probably mabutangan dito, uh, mga cubicles for such things, bitang mga booths or whatsoever. Maka-propose man taana sa kaapp or sa ano, nga makakuha dito, anyways, senator Mixman ang nagbabuhat sa judana, so, makan demand tagamay.
Thank you.
Is that all, Sir Butch, Sir June? Uh, Board Member, Delayan, yes, you gonna wrap this up na kaya murag, delayed na kita?
Check, check, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so since there are no more questions, any queries, so we will, we will move on. So I would like to, uh, thank our guest for today, Sir Butch Melendez, as well as to Mr. Cornelia Surgeon across, uh, the second. So we sincerely appreciate, sir, for your appearance before, before this esteemed, uh, body, and for giving us an update, as well as the, for giving us the, uh, statistical, uh, data for elaborating the activities, and also for providing us a clear, transparent, and comprehensive details, information of the coming activities, schedules, particularly the coming 111th founding anniversary in the province of Bukit Nun.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Board Member, Delayan, ah, sir, by the way, just a reminder, i-amend lang na to tong mga dates before na to i-post, and then if possible, masulat na to ang kisat tong mga, the bands especially, para mak- makita nila, so, makaani sila din sa malay balay.
Okay, noted, noted.
So, okay.
So we could post it on our Facebook page na rin. Yeah, if possible, anyway, ang dates na manang usponad to.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would like to excuse the guest from the podium?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Sir June and Sir Butch, for coming. Uh, can we have a two minutes break? Do the second then, break's up, break. Judi seconded, break's up, break. And also for the restoration of our internal house rule, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. We will not proceed to unfinished business. We have only three items. In the unfinished business, Mr. Chairman, may we now recognize a gentleman coming from the first legislative district for the unfinished business, Mr. Chair, the Honorable Board Member Larry Unahan?
Board Member Larry Unahan is recognized?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just like to move to defer these three items, Your Honor.
Three items being deferred? Any second? As Majority Floor Leader?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Proceeding to the second reading, business for the day, Mr. Chair. For items number one and two, may we now recognize the lady coming from the third legislative district, the Honorable Member Manor Bakasanabe?
The lady in black, Board Member Manor Bakasanabe, is recognized?
Thank you, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the Joint Committee Report of the Committees on Poverty Elevation, Social Reform, and on Rules and Privileges, to which was referred ordinance number 15-2025, enacted on June 27, 2025, the Sanggunyang Bayan of Kabanglasan Bukidnon, entitled "An Ordinance Institutionalizing the Expandeds of the Pantawid Pamilyang Pilipino Program," or "Four Piece Beneficiaries in the Municipality of Kabanglasan and for Other Purposes." Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. Findings: Ordinance Number 15-2025 seeks to solidify and enhance the benefits extended to four-piece beneficiaries through local legislation. Grounded in both national legislation and regional innovations, this move toward institutionalizing support recognizes the pivotal role of local government units in sustaining conditional cash transfer initiatives. Article 7 of 12 of 1987 Philippine Constitution provides "The state shall promote a just and dynamic social order thereby uplifting its citizens and marginalized sectors from poverty through policies that provide adequate social services, promote full employment, a rising standard of living, and improve quality of life for all." The state further recognizes the need to foster social justice. Republic Act Number 7160, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991, which assures the provision for the delivery of basic services and facilities shall be divulged from the national government to provinces, cities, municipalities, and barangay so that each LGU shall be responsible for a minimum set of services and facilities following established national policies, guidelines, and standards. Section 13 of the Republic Act 11310 states "That qualified household beneficiaries shall be given priority in the development of the modalities and intervention under sustainable livelihood program and other appropriate or similar programs offered by other agencies implementing this end." After careful review and study, the committees found that the Ordinance Number 15-2025 is compliant and in accordance with existing laws and regulations. Recommendation: Considering the foregoing, the committees after careful review and study hereby recommend for the approval of Ordinance Number 15-2025, enacted last June 27, 2025, of the Sanggunyang Bayan of Kabanglasan Bukidnon, for being proper in form and substance in order and within the competence of the Sanggunyang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended for the approval of this committee report, Your Honor.
There's a motion for the approval? It's been judi seconded, motion approved.
Another committee report, Your Honor. Committees on Poverty Elevation and Social Reform and on Rules and Privileges, to which was referred Ordinance Number 015, approved on July 1, 2025, of the Sanggunyang Bayan of Talakag Bukidnon, entitled "Providing Support, Benefits, and Protection to Solo Parents in the Municipality of Talakag Bukidnon." Findings: Ordinance Number 015 aims to implement comprehensive support that align the national laws and ensure that solo parents in Talakag receive the assistance, protection, and opportunities they deserve. The ordinance providing support, benefits, and protection to solo parents in Talakag Bukidnon is timely and compassionate legislative measure that acknowledges the struggles of marginalized yet resilient sector of society through targeted support and policy-based protection. The LGU not only fulfills its legal mandate but also strengthens its commitment to inclusive governance, social justice, and family welfare as the ordinance is rolled out. The true measures of its success will be in the real improvements it brings to the lives of solo parents and their children. Republic Act 11861, otherwise known as the Expanded Solo Parents Welfare Act, it is a declared policy at the state to promote the family as the foundation of the nation, strengthen its solidarity, and ensure its total development. Towards this end, it shall develop a comprehensive program of services for solo parents and their children that grants additional support and benefits to solo parents in keeping with the policy of the state to promote social justice. However, Section 1447 of the Local Government Code of 1991 provides that approved ordinances imposing a fine not exceeding 2,500 pesos or an imprisonment for a period not exceeding six months or both in the discretion of the court for violation of a municipal ordinance. Considering that the subject ordinance adopts the penal provision of RA 11861, the penalties provided for exceeds that of the municipality can impose thereby making ordinance ultra varies. Recommendations: Considering the foregoing, the committees after careful review and due deliberation hereby recommend that the Ordinance Number 015, approved on July 1, 2025, the Sanggunyang Bayan of Talakag Bukidnon, be referred back to its origin for compliance of the aforementioned findings. So recommended for the approval of this committee report, Your Honor.
Judi seconded, motion approved.
Thank you.
Majority Floor Leader?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding to item number three. May we now recognize, Mr. Chairman, our ex-official member, the Honorable Board Member Gudfrey Balansag?
Board Member Balansag is recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number three is a Joint Committee Report on Barangay and Local Governments and on Rules and Privileges, Number 2025-B-003 and 2025-R-096 of 2028. Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Barangay and Local Governments and on Rules and Privileges, to which was referred Municipal Ordinance Number 2025-522 of the 11th ISB, approved on July 28, 2025, the Sanggunyang Bayan of Kalilangan Bukidnon, entitled "An Ordinance Providing Guidelines for the Registration and Accreditation of Barangay Daycare Workers of the Municipality of Kalilangan Bukidnon and granting them benefits, incentives, and for other purposes." Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. Findings: The subject ordinance aims to institutionalize a comprehensive mechanism for the registration and accreditation of barangay daycare workers within the Municipality of Kalilangan Bukidnon. Republic Act Number 6972 mandates the establishment of daycare centers in every barangay, recognizing the critical role of qualified daycare workers in nurturing the educating young children. Republic Act Number 8980 emphasizes the need for systematic approach to early childcare development, which includes the registration and accreditation of daycare workers. It also aims to recognize their vital roles in early childcare and development by granting them appropriate benefits and incentives. It is the policy of the local government unit to support and promote the welfare and development of children by strengthening the roles of barangay daycare workers through formal registration, accreditation, and provision of benefits and incentives. Barangay daycare workers are the frontline of childhood development and early education in the community. Their contribution to community building must be recognized, standardized, and supported. The committee endorses the approval of the city ordinance. It is our belief that these measures will uplift the welfare of barangay workers, enhance early childcare services, and promote inclusive governance in the Municipality of Kalilangan Bukidnon. After careful review and study, it is found out that Municipal General Ordinance Number 2025-522, approved on July 22, 2025, of the Sanggunyang Bayan of Kalilangan Bukidnon, is in accordance with existing laws, rules, and regulations. Recommendation: Considering the foregoing, the committees hereby recommends for the approval of Municipal Ordinance Number 2025-522 of the 118th ISB on the 149th Regular Session, approved on July 22, 2025, of the Sanggunyang Bayan of Kalilangan Bukidnon, for being in accordance with the law and within the scope of authority of the Sanggunyang Bayan concerned to enact. So recommended for approval of this committee report, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion? It's been judi seconded, motion approved. Thank you, Board Member Balansag?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding to item number four to sixteen. These thirty items, Mr. Chairman, will be reported to us by gentlemen coming from the fourth legislative district, the Honorable Board Member Doctor J. Pipito.
Board Member Pipito is recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joint Committee Report on Committees on Civil Service and on Rules and Privileges. Mr. Chairman, an omnibus motion for items number four to nine. Item number four is a ordinance number 08-325 from the Sanggunyang Bayan of Kabanglasan Bukidnon, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 30-324," entitled "An Ordinance Creating Agricultural and Biosystems Engineering Positions Under the Office of the Municipal Mayor of Kabanglasan Bukidnon, Providing for Amendment and the Repeal of All Ordinances in Crown Fact Therewith." Item number five is ordinance number 12-325 from the Sanggunyang Bayan, also Kabanglasan Bukidnon, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Retitling of Certain Plantilla Positions Under the Municipal Mayor's Office of the Local Government Unit of Kabanglasan in Compliance with the Civil Service Commission and Department of Budget and Management Guidelines." Item number six is ordinance number 14-325 from the Sanggunyang Bayan of Kabanglasan Bukidnon, entitled "An Ordinance Abolishing the Position of Municipal Agriculture Officer with Salary Grade 20, Plantilla Item Number MAO1 Under the Municipal Agriculture Office of the Local Government Unit of Kabanglasan Bukidnon." And item number seven is ordinance number 1270-325 from the Sanggunyang Bayan of Damulok Bukidnon, entitled "An Ordinance Number One..." Sorry, entitled "Amending Ordinance Number 1194-2023," entitled "An Ordinance Retitling Various Position Titles in Existing Plantilla or Personnel in the Local Government of Damulok Bukidnon, Particularly the Local Civil Register to Municipal Civil Register." Item number eight is ordinance number 25-116 from the Sanggunyang Bayan of Pasukong Bukidnon, entitled "An Ordinance Amending the Title of Ordinance Number 25-113 from Municipal Government Department Head One, Municipal Administrator to Municipal Government Department Head One, Municipal Administrator in the Approved Organizational Structure in this Municipality." And item number nine is ordinance number 25-01 from the Sanggunyang Bayan of Kadingilan Bukidnon, entitled "An Ordinance Retitling the Position of Supervising Administrative Officer Salary Grade 22 to Municipal Government Assistant Department Head One, Salary Grade 22 in the Municipal Government of Kadingilan Bukidnon." Mr. Chairman, omnibus motion for the approval of these following items for these ordinances all conform to updated CSC guidelines, rules, and regulations. That's the committee hereby recommend for the omnibus motion for the approval, Mr. Chair. So moving.
There's an omnibus motion? Judi seconded, motion approved.
For items number 10 and 11, Mr. Chairman. Item number 10 is a municipal ordinance number 25-5 For items number ten and eleven, Mr. Chairman, item number ten is a municipal ordinance number twenty twenty five dash five four two from the Sangguniang Bayan of Baongon Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance prohibiting municipal officers and employees, including casuals and job orders and national government agency employees from wearing unsuitable office attire, such as but not limited to tattered jeans, sandals, spaghetti straps, blouses, cap tops, shorts, uh, short pants, among others, during office hours and providing penalties for violation thereof. And item number eleven is ordinance number two four three, series of twenty twenty five from the Sangguniang Bayan of Lantapan Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance enacting the revised organizational structure and staffing pattern of the local government unit of Lantapan Province of Bukidnon, abolition, creating new positions, and appropriating the necessary funds therefore. Also, an omnibus motion, Mr. Chairman, to refer back these two items to its origin for compliance of the finding, from the findings of the, uh, committee, Mr. Chair. So moving.
There's a motion, Judy seconded, motion approved.
Uh, moving to the joint committee report of the Committees on Health and on Rules and Civil Services. Sorry. The Committees on Health and Rules and Civil, uh, Rules and Privileges, which is referred ordinance number sixteen dash three twenty five from the Sangguniang Bayan of Kabanglasan Province of Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance enacting the Health and Sanitation Code of the Municipality of Kabanglasan Bukidnon. Um, Mr. Chair, the subject ordinance aims to enact the Health and Sanitation Code of the Municipality of Kabanglasan Bukidnon. The municipal government of Kabanglasan Bukidnon deems to it appropriate to develop and implement programs and projects that prioritize the promotion and preservation of health and sanitation within the community. Republic Act number one one two two three, otherwise known as the Universal Healthcare Act of twenty nineteen, aims to ensure equitable access to quali- to qualify and affordable healthcare for all Filipinos. After careful study and after careful study, the committees found that numerous ordinances have been enacted by the concerned local Sanggunian to safeguard health, including the adoption of re- of relevant and applicable provisions in of pres- of Presidential Decree Number Eight Five Six, otherwise known as the Code of Sanitation of the Philippines in nineteen seventy five. Thus, the committees hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance number sixteen dash three twenty five from the Sangguniang Bayan of Kabanglasan Bukidnon for being proper in order and within the competence of the Sangguniang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, Judy seconded, motion approved.
Next item, from the, also from the Committees on Health and on Rules and Privileges, which is referred ordinance number three, uh, two one zero dash three twenty five from the Sangguniang Bayan of Long Carlos Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance adapting Republic Act number one 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 four eight, otherwise known as an act scaling up the national and local health and nutrition programs through a strengthened integrated strategy for maternal neonatal child health and nutrition in the first one thousand days of life, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes in the municipality of Long Carlos Bukidnon. Mr. Chair, the ordinance proposes to appropriate necessary local funds to support the implementation of the, of relevant programs. It also highlights the role and responsibilities of local government unit in addressing a malnutrition and promotion maternal, promoting maternal and child health through prenatal care, breastfeeding, immunization, and proper nutrition. After careful study, the committees found that ordinance number two one zero dash twenty, dash twenty twenty five is in accordance with existing laws, rules, and regulations. Thus, the committees hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance number two one zero dash twenty twenty five from the Sangguniang Bayan of Long Carlos Bukidnon for being proper in order and within the competence of the Sangguniang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, Judy seconded, motion approved.
Next item, still on the Committees on Health and on Rules and Privileges, which is referred Executive Order Number Six, Number Eighteen, Series of Twenty Twenty Five from the Office of the Municipal Mayor of Kitautau Bukidnon, entitled an order creating the mun- a municipal zero open defi- action verification and certification team of the municipality of Kitautau. The committee strongly recommends that the ac- the active support and cooperation of all barangays and municipal departments to ensure the effective implementation of the zero open defi- action program. The municipal government of Kitautau Bukidnon is, uh, urged to provi- to provide a Z O D team with adequate logistical and financial support to enable them to carry out their responsibilities effectively. Additionally, a regu- uh, regular reporting and monitoring mechanism should be established to track and assess the progress of each barangay towards Z O D compliance. The committees find the Executive Order Number Eighteen to be vital and timely the directive in improving public health and sanitation in the municipality of Kitautau Bukidnon. The creation of the Z O D verification and certification team is a proactive measure to meet national goals and ensure sustainable sanitation practices, uh, and that the grassroots level. The committees after careful study and review hereby recommend for the approval of Executive Order Number Eighteen, Series of Twenty Twenty Five from the Office of the Municipal Mayor of Kitautau Bukidnon for being proper in order and within the scope of authority of the local chief executive concerned to promulgate. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, Judy seconded, motion approved.
Next, still on the Committees on Health and on Rules and Privileges, which is referred ordinance number twenty twenty five dash two one six four from the Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance creating the Water Quality Management Council in the municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon. Pursuant to provision section of section sixteen, Article Two of the nineteen eighty seven Philippine Constitution and Republic Act number ninety two seventy five, otherwise known as the Philippine, Philippine Clear Water Act of twenty twenty four, there is a pressing need to institutionalize mechanism for maintaining and improving water quality at the local level. These laws mandate the state to safeguard the people's right to balance, to a balanced and healthy, and helpful ecology and protect water waste from pollution from various sources. The subject ordinance seeks to establish a Water Quality Management Council in the municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon, which will serve as the local body tasked with developing, implementing, and monitoring water quality programs in the locality. The ordinance aligns with the national legal framework to protect bodies of water from pollution and to ensure the preservation of the environment and public's health. The council is instrumental in implementing programs that safeguard water quality and address pollution eh, from land-based sources. After careful study, the committees found that the ordinance number twenty twenty five dash two one six four is in accordance with existing laws, rules, and regulations. Thus, the committees hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash two one six four from the Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon for being proper in order and within the competence of the Sangguniang Bayan concerned to pass. So moving, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, it's been Judy seconded, motion approved.
And last, from the Committees on Health and Rules and Privileges, which is the, which is referred ordinance number one three two dash three twenty four from the Sangguniang Panglusod of Bal- City of Valencia, Province of Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance creating the birthing homes, birthing homes and maternity or lying in clinics monitoring committee in the city of Valencia. The subject ordinance aims to establish the, a dedicated monitoring body that will oversee the operation and standards of compliance of birthing homes and maternity clinic, or paternity or lying in clinics in the city of Valencia, Bukidnon. The ordinance is anchored on section twelve, Article Two, the nineteen eighty seven Philippine Constitution, which mandates the state to e- to equally protect the life eh, of the mother and the unborn from conception. This ordinance is, uh, also founded on legal frameworks, including Philhealth Circular Number two one eight dash zero 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 two, which mandates the Department of Health license to operate as a mandatory requirement for, for the accreditation of birthing homes and mater- maternity lying in clinics and D O H Administrative Order Number Two One, two zero one two dash one zero, one, uh, two zero one two dash zero zero one two, another rules and regulations governing the new classification of hospitals and other health facilities in the Philippines. The city of Valencia currently have seven public and private birthing homes and lying in clinics operating. However, the city does not have a formal local monitoring body to ensure these facilities meet the standards set by the Department of Health and Philhealth. The proposed committee will take on this role overseeing compliance with national guidelines and recommending corrective actions when necessary. After careful study, the committees found that ordinance number one three two dash twenty twenty four is in accordance with existing laws, rules, and recommendations. Thus, the committee is he- is hereby recommending for its approval. Uh, for this ordinance, number one three two dash three twenty four, from the Sangguniang Panglusod of the City of Valencia, Province of Bukidnon for being proper in order and within the competence of the Sangguniang Panglusod concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, it's been Judy seconded, motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Board Member Pito. Majority floor leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding to item number seventeen, Mr. Chairman, may we now recognize a gentleman coming from the second legislative district. The Honorable Board Member Attorney, Holis Musanto.
Attorney Musanto is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. This is a joint committee report on the Committees on Appropriations and on Rules and Privileges, to which was referred Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash One Three Zero of the twenty first regular session of the P T N Council dated June three twenty twenty five, the Sangguniang Bayan of Kabanglasan Bukidnon, entitled the resolution adopting the supplemental annual investment plan for supplemental budget number one, calendar year twenty twenty five of the local government unit of Kabanglasan Bukidnon. As to the findings, upon review of the resolution submitted by the municipality of Kabanglasan, the Provincial Planning and Development Office has found that the Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash One Three Zero is within the planned activities of the local government unit of Kabanglasan. It has also been found to be in order and has followed the prescribed planning procedures. Thus, the committees of the due deliberation hereby recommend for the approval of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash One Three Zero of the twenty first regular session of the P T N Council dated June three twenty twenty five, the Sangguniang Bayan of Kabanglasan Bukidnon, for being proper in order and within the competence of the Sangguniang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, it's been Judy seconded, motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, proceeding to item number eighteen, in behalf of the chairman of the committee and our presiding officer of today's session, this item be reported to us by gentleman coming from the third legislative district, Mr. Chairman, the Honorable Board Member, Jimmy Fortiz.
The vice chair on games and amusement, uh, Board Member Fortiz is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Games and Amusement and Committee on Rules and Privileges, to which, uh, was referred ordinance number twenty twenty five dash twenty two sixteen twenty six regular session approved on July twenty one, twenty twenty five, of the Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance enacting measures for the effective enforcement of the ban on illegal online gambling and cyber financial fraud in the municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon. Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. Committee findings pursuant to Executive Order Number Fourteen, Series of Twenty Twenty Four, and several department of the interior and local government D I L G memorandum circulars, numbers twenty twenty four dash zero eight three, twenty twenty five dash zero zero one, pertains to the closure of all internet gambling licenses, I G L S, and Pilip- Philippine offshore gambling operations. Fogo's eh, local government units, L G Os, are mandated to implement strong measure against Philippine offshore gaming operators Fogo's internet gambling licenses, I G L S, and cyber financial fraud operation. The committee recognized says the urgent need to enact an ordinance to strengthen the monitoring, regulation, and enforcement mechanism within the municipality of Manolo Fortis in response to the growing concern over illegal online gambling and cyber financial fraud. The ordinance upholds the general welfare provisions under the local government code and ensures monthly reporting and coordination with national agencies such as D I L G, P N P, and N B I. Recommendation, the commi- the committees, after due deliberation and careful study, hereby recommended for the approval of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash two two one six twenty six regular session approved on July twenty one, twenty twenty five, the Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortis for being in accordance with the law and within the scope of authority of the Sanggunian to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, it's been Judy seconded, motion approved. Thank you so much, Board Member Fortiz.
Mr. Chairman, proceeding to item two twenty one, these three items will be reported to us by gentleman coming from the fourth legislative district, the Honorable Board Member Attorney, Oliver Owen Garcia.
Attorney Board Member Owen Garcia is recognized.
Mr. Chair, Majority Floor Leader, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Joint Committee Report of the Committees on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and the Committee on Rules and Privileges, numbers twenty twenty five dash L zero thirty two and number twenty twenty five dash R one hundred four. Mr. Chairman, the Committees on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and on Rules and Privileges, to which was referred ordinance number one twenty nine fifteenth S B, Series of two thousand twenty five, approved on May thirty, twenty twenty five, the Sangguniang Bayan of Kitautau Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance prohibiting the dispensing, selling, and reselling of pharmaceutical products in sarisari stores and other similar retail outlets and prescribing penalties therefore. Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. Findings, the Sangguniang Bayan of Kitautau anchored this ordinance on section thirty of Republic Act Number One O Nine One Eight, otherwise known as the Philippines Pharmacy Act, which prohibits the compounding, dispensing, selling, or reselling of pharmaceutical products through retail drug outlets not licensed by the Food and Drug Administration. The committees, after careful review and consultation with the Food and Drugs Authority, concluded that sarisari stores and retail outlets are not prohibited from dispensing, selling, and reselling pharmaceutical products so far as over-the-counter drugs are concerned, provided that the establishment applies with the F D A as retail outlet of non-prescription drugs, O R O N P D, and the employment of the supervision and oversight of a duly registered and licensed pharmacist. It's with noted, however, that even compliance with the requirements, such establishments are prohibited from selling prescription drugs. The ordinance was created with the idea that the Butika ng mga barangay, a program of Department of Health, which is a drug outlet, app outlet managed by the community, non-government organization and or local government unit, with a trained operator and supervising pharmacist is serving the communities of Kitautau. However, it was confirmed that such B N Bs or Baro- Butika ng barangay are no longer existing. It was also discussed that the penalties for violation of the prohibited acts should be changed. It was dis- suggested that the penalty for the third offense should be closure of the establishment. Recommendation, the committees, after due deliberation, careful study, hereby recommend that the ordinance number one twenty nine, fifteen S B, Series of twenty twenty five, approved on May thirty, twenty twenty five, the Sangguniang Bayan of Kitautau Bukidnon, be referred back to its origin for refinement. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, Judy seconded, motion approved.
Next is Joint Committee Report of the Committee on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and Rules and Privileges, Committee Report Number Twenty Twenty Five Dash L zero thirty three and Committee Report Number Twenty Twenty Five R one one eight. The Committees on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and on Rules and Privileg- Privileges, to which was referred a letter from the Provincial Governor, Roelio Neil P. Roque, requesting the issuance of the Sangguniang Panluigan Resolution in support of the letter request of the Department of Public Works and Highways Bukidnon Fort Engineering this office for the conversion of the following roads into national roads. Project name Junction Sari Highway, Baguntaas to Sugod, Gapunan Road, location Valencia City. Junction Sari Highway, Baguntaas, Lurugan, Lantapan Road, location Valencia City and Lantapan. Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. Findings, the committees, after careful review and consultation with the Department of Public Works and Highways Bukidnon Fort Engineering Office, evaluated the proposal for the conversion of the two junction roads located in Valencia City and along the Valencia-Lantapan Road. It was established that in accordance with the revised criteria and guidelines set forth under Department Order Number One One Two, Series of twenty twenty four, the conversion of local roads to national classification requires both the conduct of a feasibility study and the completion of the traffic count assessment as essential prerequisites. The DPWH Bukidnon Fort District Engineering Office, together with its engineers from Valencia District Engineering Office, confirmed that the required feasibility studies and TCAs for the two proposed roads have been duly conducted and completed. The evaluation further revealed that the junction of Sari Highway, Baguntaas-Sugod-Kapunan Road has a total length of six point nine kilometers with two point four kilometers classified as provincial, while the junction of Sari Highway, Baguntaas-Lurugan-Lantapan Road has a total length of fifteen point seven kilometers with twelve point seven kilometers classified as provincial. Both roads were found compliant with the established DPWH standards and requirements for conversion. The Committees acknowledged the submission of the feasibility study and affirmed that the authority to declare a junction as a national road lies with the DPWH Secretary. The DPWH Fort District Engineering Office is actively resolving right-of-way concerns and has referred matters involving overlaps with private lands to the Regional Office for appropriate action. The Committees concluded that issuance of a resolution is both proper and necessary, and it should clearly specify the precise kilometer measurements of the provincial road proportions proposed for conversion. The engineers from the Fort DEO further cited DPWH Department Order Number one forty seven to support the said resolution. Recommendation, after due deliberation, careful study, the Committees hereby recommend the approval of the request of Provincial Governor Roelio Neil P. Roque for the issuance of Sangguniang Pangluigan Resolution in support of Department of Public Works and Highways, Bukidnon Fort District Engineering Office's request for the road conversion. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion. It's been Judy Second Ed. Motion approved.
Finally, uh, Committee Report Numbers twenty twenty five dash O zero zero three and Committee Report Number R dash one zero five. The Committee on Peace and Order and on Rules and Privileges to which was referred ordinance number one five zero dash twenty twenty five of the ninth SP, one hundred thirty-seven Regular Session enacted on June sixteen, twenty twenty five, the Sangguniang Panglungsod of Valencia City, Bukidnon, entitled "An Ordinance Institutionalisating the Kabataan Kontra Drogah at Terrorismo KK Dat" of the Sangguniang Kabataan of Valencia City and for other purposes, have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. Ordinance Number one fifty dash twenty twenty five, the City of Valencia, Bukidnon, institutionalized the Kabataan Kontra Drogah at Terrorismo or KK Dat, and mandated that a portion of the barangay's annual ten percent general fund be allocated to youth development programs identified in the annual barangay youth investment program and the Comprehensive Barangay Youth Development Plan. This provided a fiscal basis for KK Dat's implementation and aligned with Republic Act nine one sixty-five, the Comprehensive Dangerous Drugs Act of twenty twenty-two, which promotes community-based prevention and active youth participation in anti-drug initiatives. Upon review and deliberation, the Committee on Peace and Order and on Rules and Privileges in coordination with the Provincial Youth Development Officer and the Provincial Director of the DILG determined that section sixteen mandating at least five percent of the barangay's ten percent budget for KK Dat had no basis in any national directive and was solely a PNP initiative. While allocation for programs aligned with areas of youth participation such as priority flagship on health and on peace building and security is permissible, the Committees found this fixed percentage legally unsupported and unduly restrictive. The DILG recommended replacing the fixed percentage with the word quote substantial amount to ensure consistency with legislative intent and encourage securing external funding to supplement barangay resources and enhance program sustainability. Additionally, the Committees recommend revising section four so that all definitions of terms, definition of terms conform to those provided for in RA nine one sixty-five. The ordinance was deemed substantive but required refinement before full implementation. Recommendation, the Committee after due deliberation, careful study, hereby recommend ordinance number one fifty dash twenty twenty five, enacted on June sixteen, twenty twenty five, the Sangguniang Panglungsod of Valencia City, Bukidnon, be referred back to its origin for refinement. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion to refer back. It's been Judy Second Ed. Motion approved. Thank you, Attorney Board Member Owen Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding to item number twenty-two, Mr. Chairman, may I may we now recognize a gentleman coming from the second legislative district, the Honorable Board Member Marlon Brando Dinlayan.
Board Member Marlon Dinlayan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. I have only one item, number twenty-two dash eight Regular Session of twenty-eight SP, Joint Committee Report of the Committees on Ways and Means, Trade and Industry, and on Rules and Privileges. Number two zero two five dash S zero zero six of twenty-eight SP, number twenty twenty five dash R one zero seven twenty-eight SP. The Committees on Ways and Means, Trade and Industry, and on Rules and Privileges to which was referred ordinance number ninety-nine dash three twenty-four, seventy-first Regular Session approved on February sixth, twenty twenty-four, of the Sangguniang Panglungsod of Valencia City, Bukidnon, entitled "An Ordinance Granting Tax Relief and/or Amnesty to All Real Property Owners in the City of Valencia for the Payment of Surcharge, Charges, Interests, and Penalties Imposed upon All Delinquent Real Property Taxes Until February thirty, twenty twenty-four." The Committees have considered the same and do hereby submit their comments, findings, and recommendations. Comments or findings? Section one nine two of Republic Act seventy-one sixty provides that local government units may, through ordinances duly-approved, grant tax exemptions, incentives, or relief under such terms and conditions as may deem necessary. The City of Valencia is an agriculture-based city, and most of the taxpayers are farmers and cannot afford to pay their taxes, let alone the surcharges, interest, and penalties due to the increase of the prices of farm inputs like fertilizers. The objective of the grant of tax relief is threefold. First, to help out property owners, ease their financial burden due to the high prices and economic difficulties experienced in the year twenty twenty-three. Second, to widen the tax base by encouraging more taxpayers to pay their real property taxes by removing all surcharges, interest, and penalties on all delinquent taxes. And third, to increase the locally sourced income through an efficient collection of all outstanding real property taxes. The amnesty or condemnation of surcharges, interest, and penalties on delinquent real property taxes shall cover the period from January one, nineteen eighty, to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. All real property taxes due from January one, nineteen eighty, to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three may be paid in full or installment basis, provided that the whole amount due will be paid in full on or before September thirty, twenty twenty-four. Recommendation, the Committees after due deliberation hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance number ninety-nine dash twenty twenty-four, seventy-first Regular Session approved on February sixth, twenty twenty-four, of the Sangguniang Panglungsod of Valencia City, Bukidnon, for being in accordance with the law and within the scope of authority of the Sangguniang to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion. It's been Judy Second Ed. Motion approved.
Thank you, General.
Mr. Chairman, proceeding to item number twenty-three, may we now recognize a gentleman coming from the second legislative district, the Honorable Board Member Bobby G. Dinlayan.
Board Member Bobby G. Dinlayan is recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, uh, Majority Floor Leader and colleagues. Joint Committee Report of the Committees on Land Use and Human Settlement, Aggregant Reform, and on Rules and Privileges, number twenty twenty five dash U dash zero zero two and number twenty twenty five dash R dash one zero eight of the twenty-eight SP. Mr. Chairman, the Committees on Land Use and Human Settlement, Aggregant Reform, and on Rules and Privileges to which was referred ordinance number twenty twenty five dash forty-five approved on March four, twenty twenty five, of the Sangguniang Bayan of Sumilao, Bukidnon, entitled "An Ordinance Regulating All Land Survey Activities in the Municipality of Sumilao, Bukidnon, and for Other Purposes." Have considered the same and do hereby submit the findings, comments, and recommendations. As to findings, number one, legal basis, the ordinance aligns with the general welfare clause under section sixteen of the Local Government Code, which authorizes local government units to enact ordinances promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of their constituents. It also reflects the LGO's authority to regulate land use and related professional activities within its jurisdiction. Number two, clarity of policy, the ordinance clearly defines its scope and intent, requiring all land surveys within Sumilao to undergo a permitting process, ensuring transparency and due notice to adjoining landowners. This mitigates boundary disputes and enhances property rights documentation. Number three, procedural integrity, the imposition of documentary requirements such as barangay clearance, tax declaration, dean or clearance, and proof of ownership is consistent with existing regulatory practices. The ordinance further provides exemptions for surveys initiated by the government or sanctioned by courts, which shows legislative precedence. Number four, implementation and enforcement, the ordinance designates the office of the mayor through the best experiment and licensing office as the implementing body. It provides clear enforcement mechanisms, including penalties for violations and calls for issuance of the governing rules and regulations, ensuring clarity in execution. Number five, revenue impact, the permit fees imposed are reasonable and structured according to land classification and area. This serves both regulatory and revenue generating purposes for the municipality. And number six, constitutional safeguards, the ordinance includes a separability clause and requires publication satisfying the constitutional requirements of validity and enforceability of local legislation. Recommendations, the Committees after due deliberation hereby recommended for the approval of the ordinance number twenty twenty five dash forty-five, approved on March four, twenty twenty five, of the Sangguniang Bayan of Sumilao, Bukidnon, for being proper in order and within the competence of the Sangguniang Bayan concerned to pass. So I recommended, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion. Judy Second Ed. Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding to the new business for the day, Honorable Presiding Officer, for item number twenty-two by this representation, Mr. Chair. This is actually a proposed resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Item twenty-four.
Yeah, in the new business for the day, Mr. Chair, by this representation, so, Mr. Chairman, this proposed resolution by this representation, a resolution congratulating and commending the Provincial Assessor of President Merna Enzweko for her recognition as outstanding professional in the field of real estate services during the Professional Regulation Commission Outstanding Professional Award in twenty twenty-five. Whereas, the Professional Regulation Commission, through its Council of Accredited Professional Organizations Region Ten, held its prestigious fifty-second founding anniversary celebration entitled Gabi ng Parangal on June twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, at Pearlmont Hotel, Democratic Drive, Cagayan de Rosyty, to honor exemplary professionals across the various disciplines who have demonstrated outstanding service, leadership, and integrity in their respective fields. Whereas, this momentous occasion, Provincial Assessor of President Merna Enzweko was conferred the distinguished award of outstanding professional in the field of real estate appraisal, a recognition that reflects exceptional contribution to the profession and unwavering commitment to public service. Whereas, an award given to Ms. Enzweko is one of the highest honors bestowed by the PRC, signifying not only technical excellence but also ethical conduct, visionary leadership, and a profound impact on the community and the profession. Whereas, Ms. Enzweko has served the province of Bukidnon with distinction, demonstrating exemplary performance in a role as Provincial Assessor, where she has consistently upheld the principle of transparency, fairness, accuracy in property valuation, and assessment. fairness, accuracy in property valuation, and assessment.
So moving to...
Motion, due seconded, motion approved.
Next, Mr. Chairman, it's a resolution condemning online gambling in the province of Bokidnon, supporting for the purpose the bills filed by Senator Juan Miguel Zubiri and the representatives of Bokidnon. Sponsored by your schoolie, whereas, online gambling has developed into an epidemic in Bokidnon, infilling our homes, making gambling addict for people from all walks of life, including our children. Whereas, in Cebaway, a sixteen-year-old party student reportedly gave two kids all night after two consecutive online gambling losses using two hundred that he had taken from his parents. Whereas, in Manolo Porte, online gambling reportedly motivated a police corporal to lap the convenience store with his Asian partner popping away with $1,000 from the liquor store, from busy court, and forced under arrest. Whereas, with online gambling addiction on the rise, we have seen our constituents sink into criminality and bankruptcy, and we have witnessed how online gambling has seriously damaged the personal relationships and the mental as well as physical health of our people. Whereas, we also fear that if online gambling continues to grow, the province of Bokidnon will soon see an economic decline as constituents run out of disposable income and as industries experience a dip in productivity. Whereas, given the wide-ranging problems caused by online gambling among the people of Bokidnon, the Senate of the Philippines, the Sumbunian Faglalwigan here by support Senate Bill number one four-two, filed by Senator Juan Miguel Zubiri and House Bill number one seventeen... ...proposals a total ban on all forms of online gambling. Whereas, the Sumbunian Faglalwigan by support House Bill number seven-two-one, filed by Representative Jose Manuel Alba, Representative Jonathan Kiat Correntz, and Representative Mordecai Zabiri, and then Representative Larni Labin Rocken and Representative Arlin Ion, seeking to prohibit the promotion of online gambling in mobile payment applications. Whereas, we join all concerned groups and individuals Now therefore, this is all that is hereby resolved to pass and adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Condemning Online Gambling in the Province of Bukinon, Supporting for the Purpose the Bills Filed by Senator Juan Miguel Zubiri and the Representatives of Bukinon." So moving, Mr. Chairman, Madam President.
There's a motion, due the second day, motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Honorable Garcia. Proceeding to items number thirty-three and thirty-four, chairman, giving the notice of command from the second legislative district, do you propose board member Bobby Jayden Lyon?
Board member Bobby Jayden Lyon, chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, propose a resolution, number seven nine six, twenty twenty five, of twenty eighth street. A resolution highly commending the honorable Jonathan Kaiti Flores, representative of the second legislative district of the province of Bukinon, for his invaluable contributions to the passage and enactment of Republic Act Number 14231, otherwise known as the Government Optimization Act. Whereas the Sangguniang Paglalwigan of Bukinon makes exemplary achievements and significant contributions to public officials who have rendered outstanding service for the benefit of the province of Bukinon and the fifteen people. Whereas the honorable Jonathan Kaiti Flores, Congressman of the second legislative district of the province of Bukinon, has shown unwavering dedication, legislative competence, and steadfast commitment to good governance and public service. Whereas his active participation, advocacy, and sponsorship is instrumental in the passage of Republic Act Number 14231, otherwise known as the Government Optimization Act, signed in law by the president, Assistant Attorney General Armar Junior, on August four, twenty twenty five, which marks a significant milestone in advancing efficiency, transparency, and accountability in the government operations. Whereas through his efforts, this act is expected to streamline processes, eliminate dependencies, and promote optimal use of government resources than by limiting only the constituents of the province of Bukinon but the entire nation. Whereas the Government Optimization Act will also foster cultural performance and innovation in the bureaucracy, resulting with faster public service delivery, improved access to essential programs, and better outcomes for the different people, especially in the undeserved communities. Whereas the province of Bukinon takes pride in the achievements of one of the most distinguished leaders of working Congress, has brought honor and meaningful reforms that reflect the values of the judiciary, innovation, and service. Now therefore, motion of board member Bobby Jayden Lyon, do you have any further questions?
Resolve, as it is hereby resolved, to adopt a resolution highly commending the honorable Jonathan Kaiti Flores, representative of the second legislative district of the province of Bukinon, for his invaluable contributions to the passage and enactment of the Republic Act Number 1112231, otherwise known as the Government Optimization Act. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to Jonathan Kaiti Flores as a token of the Sangguniang Paglalwigan recognition and appreciation. So I move, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, it's been due the second day, motion approved.
Propose resolution, number zero three seven, thus twenty twenty five, of the twenty eighth street. A resolution to prohibit government employees in the province of Bukinon from playing online games, engaging in online gambling, and using mobile devices for non-work-related purposes during official working hours. Whereas public office is a public trust, and all government officials and employees are expected to devote their official time solely to the performance of their duties and responsibilities. Whereas under Republic Act Number sixty-one sixty-seven thirteen, otherwise known as the Code of Conduct and Ethical Standards for Public Officials and Employees, mandates all public servants to uphold the high standards of professionalism, integrity, and efficiency in the discharge of public service. Whereas the playing of online games, engaging in online gambling activities, and non-work-related use of cellphones during official working hours have been observed to cause destructions, reduce work productivity, and affect the quality of services rendered to the public. Whereas the use of government-issued devices and internet connections for non-official purposes constitutes a misuse of public resources and undermines the principle of efficient and accountable governance. Whereas online gaming and gambling not only undermine workplace discipline and efficiency, but also adversely affect the personal lives of employees by fostering addictive behaviors, financially financial instability, and strained relationships with family and loved ones, which ultimately impact the overall well-being and job performance. Whereas the province of Bukinon shall not tolerate any behavior that compromises the integrity, discipline, and public trust expected from the government employees. As such, as such act not only diminishes workplace productivity, but also erodes the public's confidence in our government institutions. Whereas it is imperative for the provincial government of Bukinon to implement policies that promote discipline, efficiency, and responsible use of time and resources in the workplace to safeguard public interest and ensure excellence in public service. Now therefore, motion on board member Bobby Jayden Lyon, so is duly seconded by the member present. Be it resolved, as it is hereby resolved, to adopt a resolution to prohibit government employees in the province of Bukinon from playing online games, engaging in online gambling, and using mobile devices for non-work-related purpose during official working hours. Resolve further that all provincial departments, offices, and component local governments' units are hereby enjoined to issue the necessary memoranda and internal policies, conduct periodic monitoring, and undertake appropriate measures to ensure all of full compliance with this resolution, subject to administrative sanctions for so want to existing civil service laws, rules, and regulations particularly under the Civil Service Resolution Number 1701077, series of twenty seventeen, also known as the Rules on Administrative Cases in the Civil Service. Resolve finally that copies of this resolution be furnished to the office of the provincial governor, all provincial departments, and the cities municipalities within the province for their appropriate information, guidance, and strict implementation. So I move, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, it's been duly seconded. As attorney, board member Garcia.
Yeah, would like to know if the good gentleman also consulted the new Civil Service Commission's rules on online gambling? If this is, although this is a general rule, na bawal ang online gambling, but as to the details, and this is just a resolution, but I don't know if they consulted the new, pag umansad, like the other week, la to nagawa's. So may I, ano, from the author?
So thank you, a good gentleman from the fourth district, attorney Owen Garcia. It stated here that the Civil Service Resolutions Number 1701077, series of twenty seventeen, also known as the Rules on Administrative Cases in the Civil Service. There are there are outlines that the administrative sanctions for various offenses within the civil service, once a offense is conducted prejudicial to the best interest of the public service, which covers actions that negatively impact the efficiency, integrity, and reputation of the government. So naasay balawad in the twenty seventeen. Resolution Number 1701077, amo pani akong ibasayan, Mr. Chairman. Anga moning isang nagpadusupod, naniyan atong online games, engaging online gambling, to pursue this resolution.
Yeah, thank you to the author. I'm not against it, in fact, I am with the good gentleman. I'm just that, this is just anyway a resolution in joining all employees of the provincial government of Bukinon to refrain or stop playing online gambling. No, naghanap ko kibaw ano makita din sa ato ang kadula. So, okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm confident with that. Anyway, wala may penal clause, ang resolution is just an encouragement. I'd just like to bring to the attention of the chairs that there are, there's a new Civil Service Commission Resolution on online gambling. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a suggestion, probably we could join that latest resolution of civil service to that resolution of board member Bobby Jayden.
Amen namang po'ta, Mr. Chairman. Nila lang, malangan man.
Okay, so is it duly seconded? Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, proceeding to items number thirty-five to forty-four, Mr. Chairman. Ten items by this representation. Honorable presiding officers, Mr. Chairman, these are, ten items are all endorsement letter dated August twelfth, twenty twenty five, from the Provincial Planning Development Coordinator, Civil Society Organization desk of the Provincial Planning Development Office, Engineer Gislie Mangobat, of the different civil service organization intend for the accreditation, applying for the accreditation for civil society organization in the provincial government. Thus, I'm on the post-motion for the approval of these ten items to it, Mr. Chairman. Item number thirty-five, the Abag Kalambuan Incorporated with the address of Sunfall, Barangay Kalasungai, City of Malay Balay. And item number thirty-six, Mr. Chairman, this is Bukinon Multi-Secretary Services Foundation Incorporated, and this is in the Porok One, Tuban Village, North Population Muramak. And item number thirty-seven, Mr. Chairman, kapisana ng mga broadcaster ng Pilipinas, Bukinon Chapter Incorporated, and this is located at the DXIQ FM Lab Radio. It's G and G Building, Barangay Three, Fourteenth Street, City of Malay Balay, and also the Kilusang Pagbabago Lead Organization Incorporated, and this is Prox Seven, Central Population Kalilangan, and also Mindanao Consumers and Commuters Council Incorporated, and this is at Door Four Plan Apartment, Manakila Street, Prok Twelve, Population Valencia City. And also, Mr. Chairman, the Mindanao Service Cooperation for Genuine Development Incorporated. And again, this is in Door Four Plan Apartment, Manakila Street, Prok Twelve, Population Valencia City, and the Parents Mobilization Action Group, Malay Balay City. And this is at Alberto Street, White House Compound, Barangay One, City of Malay Balay. And also, Mr. Chairman, the Religious Educators, Multi-Purpose Cooperative, Porok Five, Barangay Sanusi, City of Malay Balay. And also, Mr. Chairman, the Valencia City Chamber of Commerce and Industry Association Incorporated. And this is in Valencia City Gymnasium, located in Cultural Center, Cultural Center, City of Valencia. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, the Valencia City Single Motors Association Incorporated, and this is Prok Two Banlag, Valencia City, Province of Bukinon. These ten items, Mr. Chairman, omnibus motion for the approval of the application for the accreditation in the civil society in the provincial government of Bukinon. So moving for an omnibus motion of the approval of these ten items, Mr. Chairman.
Before we approve, attorney Garcia is.
The provincial, the provincial development office in endorsing this matter to the Sangguniang stated that endorsing these documents for review on their application for accreditation. I would just like to ask if there is a requirement for these organizations to be an accredited CSO in their locality before they can come to the province? I don't know what is the guideline now. If it is not a requirement, they can go directly.
To the province.
Because we don't, we can see the attachments.
I don't think, Mr. Chairman, that the, our requirement here, because all the documents scrutinized by the provincial planning development office, Mr. Chairman.
So if that is the case, then maybe the endorsement should not be for review? That the documents are complete and in order, and recommending to the Sangguniang for approval? Not, not review? Because anyway, wala namang katabuhaton. But this is all endorsement for review on their application. And if we don't conduct committee hearings on this, we don't have a chance to ask them, kung nabi walhundre, no, na ay left-leaning or supportive of forces kontra gobyerno. Now, anyway, from the, this, well, I do not know them, they, they look harmless, no?
All of these ten, ah, all of these ten. Yeah, but because, because what we did in the local government units, when I was still in the municipality, Mr. Chairman, actually, the committee itself conducted a committee hearing on this matter. Personally, all the members of the committee had an access to interview all those kaling mga civil society group. That's why, yes, the point of Honorable Garcia, Mr. Chairman, but actually, as to the, as to the documents, di terigin sa provincial planning development office, actually.
Mr. Chairman, the point where I raised this, just because just like the honorable Permada, I did this for the last nine years as city councillor of Valencia. Now, assuring that when they apply for accreditation in the province, the Sangguniang of Valencia City has already reviewed their credentials. And for, to the province, pwede na di review hon. Anyway, there's already a CSO accreditation of the locality where they are holding office. Because that way, we can verify if these are not really fly-by-night, they just want to be included in the kaling mga positions where CSOs are required, no? But, but as I said, I'm not against it, in fact, I know some of them. But following the rules, unsagitan rules, no? Kung, kung di na tamag review, I'm okay, as long as there is already an accreditation from the local government unit. Because then let's give the task to the local Sangguniang Bayan or Sangguniang Palungso. That's my point, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yeah, exactly, Mr. Chairman, but at this point of time, Mr. Chairman, for the query of good gentleman coming from the fourth legislative district, Mr. Chairman, we could also ask, I think, inquire that in the provincial planning development office for the civil society organizations, for the scrutiny of all this applicants, Mr. Chairman, of different civil societies, Mr. Chairman. Most probably, Honorable Chairman, this coming Tuesday, we can have them, Engineer Mangobat. So we can defer this matter?
Ang, ang, ang point is, if they have sa listing, yeah.
This is the first, the first time that we had for the accreditation of this civil society. So I think we could defer this matter, Mr. Chairman, for approval, and we can let our provincial planning development office to sit light on the matter regarding application of this different civil societies, this organization.
I am okay, but unfortunately, I will not be around on next Tuesday.
But at least a week, we can.
Yeah, I'm willing, I'm willing, but not Tuesday, Mr. Chairman. Because, not also Monday. Yes.
Holiday twenty-five.
Holiday twenty-five, and then twenty-six, I'll not be around, I have a travel, Mr. Chairman.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, if we can, I'm, I'm.
Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday, holiday. Friday, not available.
From the chair, this is considered urgent?
No, no, this is not urgent.
So probably could still wait for another week?
Yep.
Just to clarify lang kay Engineer Mangobat, same time, actually, ano eh.
Yeah, you can proceed on Tuesday without me, as long as you can have the court. But anyway, the point was, ato lang, no? If they're accredited already sa, sa local, no need to review.
Actually, this is the first time that we had for the accreditation of this civil society organization. Because another set, ha?
Of the record lang, ha? Namang.
Judy Second, Ed, motion approved.
Additional information lang, Mr. Chairman.
Board Member Garcia, proceeding to item number forty-five, Mr. Chairman. May we now recognize a gentleman coming from the third, second legislative district, the Honorable Board Member Attorney Holis Monsanto, Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Board Member Monsanto is recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a communication, a letter in particular, dated August seventh, twenty twenty-five, with attachment coming from the Office of the Provincial Budget Officer, Province of Bukidnon, which transmitted to this August body for appropriate action the annual budget general fund for calendar year twenty twenty-five of Municipality of Quezon Bukidnon in the amount of six hundred fifty-six million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, ninety-two pesos. Attach a budget documents and technical review analysis for reference and perusal. The committees, after going over the same finds, the document attached to the said annual budget to be proper and in order, thus the committees of the Judy, after considering all these documents, sir, by recommends for the approval of the said annual budget general fund calendar year twenty twenty-five of the Municipality of Quezon Bukidnon, the amount of six hundred fifty-six million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, ninety-two pesos, subject of course to the existing budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. Moving for the approval, the same, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, Judy Second, Ed. Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding to item forty-six, Mr. Chairman. May we now recognize a gentleman coming from the first legislative district, the Honorable Board Member Elisa Isunahon.
Board Member Elisa Unahon is recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and our majority floor leader. Letter dated July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, with an attachment of the Provincial Governor, Relyonil P. Roque. This province endorsing this August body for consideration of appropriate action, the request of General San Isidro Hydro Power Corporation for the forty megawatts and Isidro Hydro Power project. The proposed project will utilize the Cagayan de Oro River spanning Barangay San Isidro, Talakag, Bukidnon, and Barangay Tingnapuluan, Cagayan de Oro, Mismis, Oital. It is expected to generate renewable energy, promote economic growth, and provide potential local employment opportunities. This concern, Your Honor, I would like to have this for the committee. Yeah, I defer this to the committee. I refer, yes. Yes, I'd like to refer this to the committee.
There's a motion to refer this to the committee on public utilities? Judy Second, Ed, motion approved.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, from items number forty-seven to fifty-four. May we now recognize again a gentleman coming from the fourth legislative district, the Honorable Board Member Attorney Oliver Owen Garcia, Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Owen Garcia is recognized?
Mr. Chairman, would like to move this, move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Laws for determination of the MOU and what is this all about? The details, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Forty-seven, yes, the DEBCON, it's an MOU between the PGB and DEBCON. I know the DEBCON group, but I would like to sit down with them and inquire what is this MOU, which is valid for the next three years. So moving to, move this to the Committee on Laws, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, Judy Second, Ed, motion approved.
Ah, yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a request for rental of a nine-square-meter space located at the provincial capital, I think, the old Itusa Engineering, for, I think, establishment of a tower of globe. Nine, nine square meters, for a period of ten years. And to just be consistent, Mr. Chairman, because we've been granting the authority to the governor to enter into lease contracts, but it has been repeatedly returned, to be consistent, no? So I would like to again refer this to the Committee on Laws, so we can review the contract ahead, if it's inclusive of the taxes. Because I have not seen that, a copy of the contract. Yeah, stated in the communications, fifteen? I, I don't know. So, oh, so we have twenty-five thousand, government... So we move further, Mr. Chairman, with that information to refer this to the Committee on Laws.
Refer to Committee on Laws.
Napay seventy-thousand kang Honorable Balansag, niya twenty-five thousand kay Honorable Palma da. Niya kinse mil ra ang Provincial Governor of Bukidnon. Labantag ang globe din eh? Wala lay.
Naya ako, pero wala yuta.
Anyway, we'll refer this matter to the Committee on Laws. And then, item number forty-nine, improvement of four units air-conditioned prefabricated storage facility at BPMC Muramag, certified as urgent by our governor. I move that we authorize the governor to enter into a contract of agreement with the White Supreme Construction for the construction of the said project in the amount of one million nine hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred ninety-six point sixty-one. So moving, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, Judy Second, Ed, motion approved.
Item number fifty is a request from the governor with a touchback resolution number twenty twenty-five dash four zero six, requesting this August body for an authority to sign the purchase order for the project supply and delivery of one-lat agricultural supplies for pagro with one supplier, Ramgo International Corporation, for the contract cost of four hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred forty-seven pesos. The bidding for the aforementioned project was conducted by the Provincial Bits and Awards Committee in accordance with the implementing rules and regulations of RA ninety-one eighty-four. Again, this is certified as urgent by the provincial governor. So moving for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, Judy Second, Ed, motion approved.
Item fifty-one is a letter dated July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five from the governor with the attach back resolution number twenty twenty-five dash four oh seven, requesting this August body for an authority to sign purchase order for the project supply and delivery of one-lat agricultural and other materials for pagro with one supplier, DP Enterprises, for the contract cost of nine hundred seventy-eight thousand. Again, the bidding for the aforementioned project was conducted by the Provincial Bits and Awards Committee in accordance with the implementing rules and regulations of RA ninety-one eighty-four. Certified as urgent by the provincial governor, I move for the approval of the said request, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, Judy Second, Ed, motion approved.
Item number fifty-two is a letter from the governor, Relyonil P. Roque, with a touchback resolution number twenty twenty-five dash four zero eight, requesting this August body for authority to sign the purchase order for the project supply and delivery of one-lat agricultural tools and other materials for pagro with one supplier, DP Enterprises, for the contract cost of two hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred pesos. The bidding for the aforementioned project was conducted by the Provincial Bits and Awards Committee in accordance with the rules and regulations of RA ninety-one eighty-four. Certified as urgent, I move to approve the said request, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, Judy Second, Ed, motion approved.
Item fifty-three is a letter dated with a touchback resolution twenty twenty-five dash four one seven of the provincial governor, Relyonil Roque. This province requesting this August body for an authority to sign the contract of agreement or purchase order for the project supply and delivery of one-lat consumable inks for various offices with one supplier, BSWIS Computer Center, for the contract cost of three hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred ninety-five. The bidding for the aforementioned project was conducted by the Provincial Bits and Awards Committee in accordance with the rules and of RA ninety-one eighty-four. This request, again, is certified as urgent. I move for the approval of the said request, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, Judy Second, Ed, motion approved.
Item fifty-four is again an updated letter with a touchback resolution number twenty twenty-five dash four one eight of the provincial governor, this province requesting this August body for authority to sign the contract of agreement slash purchase order for the project supply and delivery of ICT supplies for various offices with one supplier, BSWIS Computer Center, for the contract cost of six hundred thirty thousand, one hundred thirty pesos. The bidding for the aforementioned project was conducted by the Provincial Bits and Awards Committee in accordance with the implementing rules and regulations of RA ninety-one eighty-four. Certified as urgent, I move that we approve the said request, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, Judy Second, Ed, motion approved. Thank you, Attorney Owen Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding to item number fifty-five, Mr. Chairman, and fifty-six. These two items, Mr. Chairman, these are the letter dated July sixteen from the National Water Rights Board, Mr. Chairman. From the, this is for the application of the posting for fifteen calendar days in our bulletin board, Mr. Chairman. Thus, I move the, to invite these two water permit applicants, Mr. Chairman, on the Committee on Granter Protection, Letting Services and Perpetualness on the next Tuesday, Mr. Chairman, at nine o'clock in the morning. Regarding on the water permit application filed by the Asian Hybrid Technologies Incorporated and also the Gaia Family Safari Tents and Domes Resort in Barangay Isinoda, Kitautao, Bukidnon, and also in Aglian, Malay Balay City, Mr. Chairman.
That will be on the twenty-sixth?
Tuesday?
August twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth. At nine o'clock in the morning, Mr. Chairman. Together with the members of the Committee on Granter Protection. So these two items, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Refer to the committee. Motion approved, Judy Second, Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding to the third and final reading, Mr. Chairman. We have only three items for the third and final reading, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Attorney Paul Maguale, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, third and final reading, item number one. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one R of the, of the twenty-eighth SP, an ordinance creating one plantelia position of administrative officer five, human resource management officer three, salary grade eighteen, under the office of the provincial accountant, Province of Bukidnon, and providing funds for...
Those who are in favor, please say aye. Those who are not in favor, say nay. The ayes have it, motion approved.
Item number two. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two R of the twenty-eighth SP, an ordinance further amended in section one, paragraph two of the ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero two one R of the twenty-seventh SP, entitled, "An Ordinance Providing Terms and Conditions for List of Spaces in the Two Commercial Buildings Owned by the Provincial Government of Bukidnon and for Other Purposes."
Those who are in favor, say aye. Those who are not in favor, say nay. The ayes have it, motion approved.
Item number three. An ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero three R of the twenty-eighth SP, an ordinance, amending ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero four five R of the twenty-seventh SP on the grant of financial assistance to support the deserving and qualified medical students and the integration of program of doctors in Bukidnon and appropriating fund.
Those who are in favor, say aye. Those who are not in favor, say no. The ayes have it, motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding to our other communication, Mr. Chairman. So I move to following, Mr. Chairman. Item number one. Be forwarded to all SP for information reference. Item number two, be forwarded to the Committee on Ways and Means, Trade and Industry for information reference. Item number three, be referred to the Committee on Land Use, Human Settlement Against Reform for Information and Appropriate Action. And item number four, this will be referred to the Special Investigative Committee, Boundary Dispute for Information and Appropriate Action. And item number five, be noted, so moving for the approval as presented, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, Judy Second, Ed, motion approved.
Proceeding to the other matters from the board members, Mr. Chairman. Board Member Unahon, Board Member Casinabe, Board Member Pipito, and Board Member Babijay Dinlayan, Mr. Chairman.
Board Member Unahon is recognized? Recognize first kay Unahon man.
Hey, thank you, Your Honor. Nagelisul kayo, Unahon, on 'yung walay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would to cause an invitation to Mr. Nick Canro R. Focoi, the president and the CEO of PIK Power Bukidnon Incorporated, to discuss with the members, a letter dated July twenty-ninth, twenty, twenty-five from the office of the governor regarding their request to enter into a MOA with the PGB on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five at... August twenty-sixth, at...
What time?
Ten AM, with your, uh, Board Member Palma da. You have your nine AM on twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, ah, today?
Call nine AM ang ka, so pwede na ko ten AM siguro? Okay. Yes, at ten AM, Your Honor.
Um, Mr. Secretary, please note.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have here a data regarding the HIV/AIDS cases in the province of Bukidnon. Yes, uh, it's already alarming.
I said, ma, ma, bing isa, murad lang kay mo 'to naawans ako. I, I feel po'ta mga board members, ba?
Imagine, Your Honor, from January to March twenty twenty-five, we have already forty-one cases in the province of Bukidnon. Uh, January to March. That is why, that is why I am requesting, I am requesting Doctor Tabios, Doctor Pantelia. In fact, one of the Phil Health Doctor Francis Ramos in Valencia and the in charge of HIV/AIDS treatment coordinator in the person of Rose Marie Lagora RN sa BPH, ano sa BPMC. With due respect to the Committee Chair on Health, Okiro Board, so that they will apprise to us and what will be our action on this in aid of legislation. Kay murad dili na tiaw ni, Your Honor?
Yes.
Ng cases na nasa ato sa provincia. During the privilege hour, I think, next Tuesday?
Privilege hour or sa...
I, I mean, question hour, sorry, sorry.
Question hour. Executive?
Executive, ah, yes, eh, okay, so...
Probably during our session, mag-off lang ta, just go to the back. Probably during our session, mag-off lang ta, just go to the back, siguro.
Yes. Or before, before, before ang session, mga one o'clock siguro. Off, off, yes. Data, i-off lang na to ang kuwan, camera no? During kuwan. If we can hear siguro para sa ila, it's really sad, sad note.
Yeah, pero, for me, it's better na maano na to, anyway, we will not be naming names naman eh.
Yes, yes.
Para ma, maanupod, ma-inform pod ang public.
Yes. So, what is the pleasure, one o'clock or during question hour? One o'clock before the session? At the back sa conference na to or...
No, may suggestions, siguro, pwede sa question hour, anyway, delete lang na to ipangalan ang mga names, anyway, ang datas lang, and para ma-inform pod ang public.
Yeah.
That's the best thing to do, kay live bayat na.
So, question hour next week, sir Paul?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, by the way, we have already two, I believe, the one that is, uh, for the CSO, uh, queries regarding the accreditation. Or are we going to...
CSO ba, by on Tuesday, on Tuesday?
Eh, kajud tama na kang ano, Engineer Mangubat?
Ah, okay, okay, this is noted.
Okay, so, two?
Two.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Casinabe, uh, yes, Board Member Pipito?
Ah, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, maybe we could invite next week, Mr. Chair, also the TWG for the NMRA 2024-6, numbera, TWG.
Ah, yeah, okay, so, technical working group.
Kaya siguro pwede sa, at the back, o para di, tuloy naman, kung question hour pa na to. Isang sa numbera lang, ano, yes.
I, I think, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Board Member Casinabe.
I am one of the member of the TWG. Uh, wala pagid na polish ugmaayo ang kuwan. In numbera na to nga na budget.
Working group.
Maybe this week. The, the activity na nanahan ay nanato, pero ang corresponding budget, gi, himay-himay pagid ugmaayo.
Ah, lagi, Mr. Chair, kay basi og, naapunt ay macontribute if mag, ah, magmitana, basi nae gusto suggestion from the, ah, from the board members, para mas, basi makatabang, para mas mapasta-pasta, kung di may, at least main, ang mga inputs na to, maconsider na pod Mambing sa TWG. And then naapunt may mga suggestion na ato ni Baba as to kinse pwidi ibutang, dugang. Uh, example, si Consistor David Salvasyon, nae experience good sa pag, pagbuhat ang mga, inganib tong mga passing events, pagko-pag-coordinate. So, I think mas dahusag ma, dahusag matabang pod sa pagplanning sa, uh, twenty-twenty-six ng in numbera. So, among our purpose, uh, Mr. Chair, basi nae inputs from the board members para mas makatabang-tabang diya pod para pagpasta.
Well, so, okay, man, wala'y problema. I, the, 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 the Dep Ed was the in charge of all the activities. Had na mga coordinators, pero it's better to invite the kuwan.
At the same time, para ma-update pod ta, kung sana ang latest nila.
Kay, ay, 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 ano nga, nag, ang TWG ka, diyan si magpasta, kung ano ay, mga challenges, jest, challenges. Uh, example, isa na to is ang budget, muraag, ma-send na ba rin 'yung budget, Mambing?
Muna, muna ay, pinaka.
So, sig, siguro.
The facilities na hinahinay na naugka solban, nakita na, ang kuwan.
Anyway, kay ang, ang mga board members representing different districts, basi na po 'yung mga recommendation or suggestion nga pwidi makatabang sa TWG. Basi, ano nga tayong, Mr. Chair, maka contribute pod ta. Kay kabuluta, paspas kay ang panahon, galabay, kaya next year, March, naraban eh, Mambing na?
Yes, yes, twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six, in March.
There are some facilities nga palitun good, na to, kay wala ta, wala tay maabangan, so, purchase good. But the, the, uh, anyway, we can call the kuwan, TWG.
So, when is that, August twenty-sixth?
Before CIO's session, Mr. Chair, uh, so, ila twelve or...
Twelve, twenty, or one?
Thirty, thirty na.
I, I, I think because when the TWG will present, taas-taas rawag yun.
Ah.
Taas kayo.
Manas si Mambing, uh...
Ang brief lang nga kuwan, and sige, anyway.
Um, para ang mga idea sa mga board members, at that time pwede pod zero to ma, uh, sanay, suppose ako best governor, wala man siya, basi na po 'yung idea. Para na, para tayo tuloy, basa di bitaw kay sa ano, di like buhat, per di niya na, ang sanggurian pod, di makasupport, di sa ikilalan sa...
So, one o'clock maybe?
One o'clock?
Pwede, pwede.
Three, one, two, thirty, na, na, siya pwede.
Before a session? Anyway, uh...
Okay, di rin magtugon magdiscuss, madzila sa TWG, ma, ma, board, pag langay, ya, pag magbalas balas. At least dito, ispal lang, sharing ideas.
I think si, uh, Engineer Mangubat, still the kuwan, yeah. He knows already the, or the members, the Dep Ed, Doctor Gaso.
Anyway, iinvent, iinmo si Engineer Mangubat.
Si, si, Sir Engineer Mangubat ka balos sa kuwan.
Ah, siya.
Members.
Okay, so, one o'clock, is that, is that final? Attorney Paul, please note, one o'clock PM. Yes, Attorney Owen Garcia?
Uh, I'll take this opportunity to request that the computer in front of me, uh, be, uh, transferred to my office, anyway, there is a problem at the moment relative to the power uh, of this building, uh, because we are overloaded already. So, like to request the secretary to, I will borrow, uh, the one unit computer desktop because I have no computer in the office as I already presented as early as the beginning of this, uh, uh, sanggurian. So, uh, that's one, Mr. Chair, um, so, isa.
Just a follow-up, maybe we could invite the engineering, kung siya to mabuhat, an, it's been a while now?
Ah, yes. Uh, Mr. Chair, I think, um, of course, I'm not an engineer, but, uh, our, our, uh, load in the, this building, uh, together with the, siguro neighboring buildings, will be have to be computed.
Yeah.
And, uh, we should know how much, uh, power we have sa automa transformers, otherwise, kung overload, siyempre, mo shut down, good na, kay overload man, uh, even cost to, ano. So, I agree with you that we should call the Provincial Engineers Office and, uh, to this chamber, so that we will know what is the problem and what is the solution, uh, so that we can, if need be, appropriate funds, or if not, secure some funds somewhere, no?
Yeah.
Uh, for the immediate, uh, repair of our concern in this building.
When will we do that?
As Chair of the Committee on Engineering, I will be the one calling, uh, would like to request that they be called during the question hour.
Question hour, okay.
For, for Tuesday?
Only...
Ah, di na ba tamalangan ng session, di, patuloy naman. This will be the third or the fourth?
Anyway, kang, kang Engineer Mangubat, kajud tama kayo, pangtaon na na to, regarding ka'tong sa process lang nila.
Ah.
Before sa meeting to ask.
Anyway, uh, so, let's not to delay, uh, we'll just call this on Tuesday, anyway, you gentlemen know how to ask the questions already, uh, relative to our concerns here. And maybe the secretary also can ask the questions, so that we will, we can address the, the immediate problem of this chamber. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Owen Garcia. So, no more for the board members? Uh, yes, uh, Board Member Bobby J.
Okay, uh, have to schedule a committee meeting, uh, for a special investigating committee regarding the land boundary conflict of municipality of Kadengilan and Bukidnon.
Kadengilan and Bukidnon or Kadengilan?
Kadengilan and Carmen, katabat na Carmen. So, maybe, nanamay nine o'clock, nanay ten, nanay one o'clock, pwede eleven, eleven o'clock, Pidira? Tuesday? Kay sa Monday, one man, sa Monday, pwede palang.
Holiday, Monday.
Holiday man. Tuesday, ja? Tuesday. Pidira eleven, ini, doon man ika, Vino.
Yeah, sige, uh, it depends on your members.
So, together with the committee members, okay ra sa inyo?
Actually, uh, we can do it, my Mr. Chair, if we start on time and end on time. Think, uh, to consider also that we have one o'clock, I think.
The executive.
Executive session, okay.
Uh, uh, Majority Leader, okay ra, naman si committee, almin bro. And Attorney, I think Monsanto, and Attorney Owen.
Special.
Investigating.
Uh, let me read the members. Chair Bobby Jaden Layan, Vice Chair Attorney Owen. Members, Board Member Palmada, Laces, and yours truly.
Ah, okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, to all board members, uh, maybe you could give our secretary his time?
Okay, last, Mr. Chair. This is regarding on the, uh, concern of the Honorable Board Member Garcia regarding on the accreditation of the Civil Society Organization, the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, Mr. Chair. So, our committee meeting will be conducted on moving for the invitation to the Civil Society Accreditation, Engineer, just to Mangubat on... The, um...
It, it was scheduled on the question hour?
Question hour.
Question hour, anyway, it will not take time, man.
Kuya ba, oka lang, sayo question hour na to, delete na lang ta, okay ra? Ah, sige, sige, sige. Pinago, okay.
So, Secretary Stein?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is just, uh, about a reiteration on how crucial are our committee reports. Uh, in order to appreciate it, uh, please allow me to show a short video clip which transpired during the budget deliberation at the House of Representatives yesterday. Because, uh, I think, uh, subcommittee, oh, they're touching about, yeah, yeah. They're touching about committee report and minutes. But unfortunately, the committee cannot produce, which is quite embarrassing. Okay, they already discussed about six point seven ninety trillion budget, yet there was no committee report.
The signed report to the small community for twenty-two.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Chango, we request the input at reconsideration and we will let you know if it's possible to know.
Madam Chair, why should we take into consideration, this is public record, this is in accordance with our rules, that all committee reports must be given to our members and that should not be taken against my time because you take, you're telling me that. So, tagalit natin ang oras ko, as in sinasabi na, don't put it against consideration, it should not be taken into consideration. Madam Chair, allow me to read this, huh? Declaration of Principles and Principles, section ninety-two of our rules, public office is a public trust. The House of Representatives and every member thereof are accountable to the people of our parks, I will not read the ending portion. Number three, efficient and effective access to and dissemination of appropriate and accurate information are imperative in the meeting. So, why should it be taken into consideration, Madam Chair?
In this representation of the State Appropriations Chair at the time, so the person who's covering the jurisdiction on that particular document, that is a document within the purview of the nineteenth Congress, given that we've not crossed over to the twentieth Congress, we would need to consider, um, that, that request.
Madam Chair, that's not acceptable, this is public records. Tayo ka naman 'yung concept nato, at landa katinalay sa archives. Do I not to be buried among the garden archives, at all documents? So, may, ang daming violation, Madam Chair, walang record, hindi dinigay, na'yon is not readily available, walang records sa archives, ano sa story?
Again, this representation was not...
Madam Chair, since as the representative, there are the signed records of the twenty-twenty-five small community report. Madam Chair, simple lang to, ang electronic, bata lahat ni electronic, eh, so, dapat email sa'min lahat within five minutes, diba?
Oh, so, uh, uh, we can see in the video how important are the committee reports, Mr. Chair. That is why our safety net for our, uh, for this honorable body, we have passed it in our internal rules and procedure during the, for this twenty-eighth SP. May I cite the Rule Four, section, uh, sixteen, paragraph, uh, D and E. Minutes of committee hearing and meeting, except for matters referred to the committee for review from the Sanggunyang Bayan and Sanggunyang Panglungtud of the Province of Bukidnon. It is required that legislative staff of the committee chairman shall attend and prepare the minutes of the hearing, meeting, and submit the same to the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunyang for safekeeping and archiving. E, report of committees, the report shall be filled to the, filed to the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunyang, who shall include the same in the next order of business. The committee reports in any ordinance or resolution considered informal or hearing, meeting, shall not be submitted to the Sanggunyang Panglungtud unless accompanied by the minutes of the hearing, meeting of the committee which adopted them. Upon submission by the committee of the, of a report or on an issue concerned referred to them, the members thereof who actually participated in the discussion during the committee hearing, meeting shall be presumed to have concord the report and shall be precluded from opposing the same unless they have entered their objection thereto during the committee hearing or meeting based on the results of public hearings or committee meetings or discussions. The committee introduce amendments, consolidate resolutions, ordinance on the same subject matter or propose a substitute legislative measure. Uh, one last provision, Mr. Chair, uh, on a rule, the same rule on section nineteen, committee report shall be adopted formally, securing signature of the committee members in lieu of formal meeting is prohibited. So, that is our safety net, Mr. Chair. Uh, since, uh, I believe we are diligent enough to submit the committee report, uh, this is just, uh, a kind of, uh, informing the body that, that it's really crucial to have it submitted to the Office of the Secretary to the Sanggunyang, including the minutes of the committee meeting or hearing. And, uh, provided in section nineteen, um, without formal, uh, meeting, signing of the committee report is prohibited, except for those matters on review coming from the Sanggunyang Bayan and Sanggunyang Panglungtud. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Attorney Owen.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, except for review of ordinances coming from the committees, we do not have to do a committee hearing, but if you look at section nineteen, there is no qualification. Committee report shall be adopted formally, securing signatures of committee members in lieu of formal meeting is prohibited. So, what our staff are doing right now, after we review, is illegal under section nineteen because there is no qualification here. Earlier, there is a qualification, uh, no committee hearing is needed if, uh, it's just a review of, uh, ordinances. But when we prepare committee reports of that review, we cannot solicit, uh, signatures?
Yeah, uh...
What's, I would not, I want to be clarified, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, we would like to, it is a correct, Mr. Chair, it's a correct observation. Uh, it is anyway covered under rule four, uh, that, uh, this should be quali, uh, subject to qualification in connection to section sixteen, Mr. Chair.
Correct, so, wala mangguntakay, although, unsa man eh, committee report na sir, tungkuan, review sa ordinance, pero mas hati eh, without, ano. Uh, but, but then I was disturbed when I actually saw this already in the la, in the, in during the review, atong pagsugod yun, but I am new, so I was observing, and then kita na ko nga during session, magpapirma ang mga staff, so... Mura nga, there's a reconciliation to be made, no, between section nineteen and thatong section sixteen?
Yeah.
Sixteen ba to, uh, nga, in, in, in review of, uh, ordinances, no formal committee hearing is required, diba?
Yeah.
Uh, but maybe, abot den eh, i-reconcile lang.
We will agree with that, Mr. Chair.
Yes, around, around delete tam, ma-paul. Yes, aron, arondilita mapaul, no, ngang ginabot sa tong staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that observation.
Probably dito sa mas convenient ta, paingon. Ah, ah, yes?
Um, there are matters referred to, to, in other business, ah, another forms of communication that we approve on the floor, like request of the governor for assigning into contracts. Now, do we have formal resolutions generated out of that approval here? Like, like just this afternoon, we approved several supply contracts with clients, no? Do we generate resolutions?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair, in a form of resolution, Mr. Chair.
Yes, there's a resolution. May I just request that Chairman of the, like myself, it's always referred to me as Chair of the Committee on Laws, that I be given copy of this resolution so that I can file it also, so that kung may mangita, napod me file copy. Ah, isa katong resolutions lang, no? Katulang generated resolution so that we can keep track of, kasi naapprove, kasi wala naapprove. Okay, namay sam referred to committees, right? So that is covered by a committee report and a resolution coming from us. But katong approve on the floor, we just approve it, it's on the minutes, but katong generated, I know you're the ones preparing the resolution. So, I just, as Chair of the Committee on Laws, I hope I can be furnished copies of these resolutions.
Sure, Mr. Chair, we will furnish the copy for the Chairman, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, yes, forgive Monsanto.
Some clarifications, the one referred to the other, unsatong session.
Section 16, Paragraph D.
Okay, specifically, Section 16, Paragraph D refers to the minutes. Minutes. So, minutes is different from the committee reports. So, committee reports, when it comes to review on referral from the local, we don't have to produce the minutes. But as far as minutes on all other ordinances, probably, or resolutions, this has to be complied. That is what I understand, Mr. Chair. Because Paragraph D mentioned only on the minutes, the committee, except, what is except, what is the exception here, on, there's no need for us to have a committee minutes of the committee hearing or meeting on matters which are submitted to the committee for review coming from the Sanggunian Bayan or Sanggunian Pangungtud, Mr. Chair. That is what I understand, Mr. Chair.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
There, no, we are, on the committee reports, as far as review is concerned, in Section 19, there is no mention about committee minutes. It is only on the report. So meaning to say, it is presumed here that the reports, after it was being referred to the committee concerned, it has been reviewed. But there is no need to have a committee minutes of the committee hearing conducted. This is what I understand, Mr. Chair. Plain and simple, if we have a matter referred to our committee that is not review of ordinances, we should have minutes. Yes, a committee hearing. Minutes of that committee hearing. So that's why they were pestering me, for lack of a better word, for committee, for minutes of that committee hearing. Now, my, the, on Section 19, it's also stated that committee reports, it's prohibited to solicit signatures in lieu of a committee hearing. So, while we allow no committee hearing for review on Sanggunian Bayan and Sanggunian Pangungtud ordinances, it is still prohibited to solicit signatures. So there is an inconsistency now. In lieu of a formal meeting.
I believe, Mr. Chair, that Section 19 should be qualified, as mentioned earlier, Mr. Chair, to specifically mention that only for original measures submitted to this body and not of review matter, Mr. Chair.
Okay, sige, so that it will not be inconsistent.
Yeah.
So is that all for the board members? Secretary's time, do you still have more, Attorney Paul?
Mr. Chairman, this is just a matter of inquiry lang. Are all committee meetings and hearings, ang magprepare sa minutes, ang atong legislative staff, diba? Usually, ang ginasubmit nila, isa only a recorder lang regarding on the minutes? Or?
Katamitilang, Mr. Chair, katamitilang minute.
Nagin sila format, ang ilan ginasubmit, sa ato legislative staff? Because they are the one who actually prepare, diba? Of all those minutes? Because usually, what they are doing is just katulang record recorder. But nagin sila format, they gonna submit sa inyo, huh?
Yeah, we have recorder and then transcribe through a minute.
The hard copy? Hard copy and also katong recording? Yeah, because usually, manggut, sa akong committee, especially, ha? During, dito ako sa likod, diba, diba? Usually during conflict, ang ato ang schedule dini.
So, wala kay staff?
Nako staff ko prepare, pero nga ako magod sa hay, eh, mas maayaman, punta akong kamitanan naa. Pero naayo man committees at, nga when I also tend to observe, na sila napod usa eh, even gani nga magmusod, wala nagali musikan, na sila na duha ang magpresent, diba? Usually, magod, dina ng may tabo, so I think, it is really, I think, Mr. Chair, especially those members, ha? Kinanglagi magattend po taong sahay? Kaya nga, usually, magod, may tabo sa taong committee meeting or hearing, we cannot proceed because duha, isa lang, ang isa lang yon ang magattend. So, pwede ba na to na, Mr. Chair, nga mustik ta sa taong internal law rule? Especially, especially our secretary, na karabitan manawag sa tuwa? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we should. Eh, maka, ma-atur na mitingan, ato na ng ngurang.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Now, I was surprised, karoon lang ako na dungog. Kung dito deta sa likod magkomite hearing, kitay mo produce sa committee minutes. Kung din ha, sila, is that what is meant by the answer earlier?
A further clarification, Mr. Chair. What minute that is prepared by the office of the secretary to the Sanggunian when that hearing is conducted by N Bank or the whole or during the question hour? But kung committee lang yon, Mr. Chair, which is mostly done dito, ang legislative staff, and even here, when the committee chair prefer, dinalta kay bagdungan, so, ang committee staff, yeah, po, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, karoon na ha? Kay, uay pabor pabor di ay, kabinamuk, dinhi, kamu, sa likod kami. Ah, klaro na, na, dinhi og dito, kami. Okay, klaro na ha? Sige, kay, abin ako, pabor pabor, gamay og dako, kay mahilig na may misgamay. Anyway, at least it's clear. Now, I asked this because I've been attending the committee hearing of the Committee on Environment, especially on the water resource, which the output is, water permit application, which the output is to resolution nga atong ibutang sa atong post-it and our bulletin board. Now, mukuro maluoy ni Board Member Palmada, no, preparing all this, kay na may format. So I ask if you have submitted, wala pa daw. We have so many committee hearings of the Committee on Environment on this issue, no? Ang ending, the finding is to post the application in the bulletin board. So we will still consider that as a committee report? Kinanglan po gudog, written minutes nga ang ending, wala may usap, posting raman?
Actually, thank you for raising that query, Mr. Chair. It's been a long observation that this request for posting is addressed to the, to the office of the secretary, specifically Attorney Apollo Magualay, to post it. But at the same time, I, I put it during the first reading, but actually, I am obliged really to post it under Republic Act 6713. It has to be acted within 15 days to post it. It is an official letter from the government or other institutions that under this Republic Act, we have to post, to act on it within 15 days. But to give justice anyway to the committee, I have to place it during the first reading to inform the committee, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Anyway, ang, ang, per, antisi dito, perme ka late, no, antisi, wala perme ma late? In fairness to the Water National NWRB, diba, sila late, diba? They comply with a 15-day notice for posting, so they send a communication ahead. So, what delays it is the committee hearing. Because it's referred first to the Sanggunian, included in the order of business, and then referred to the committee of the committee environment, and then the committee environment calls them, and then after that, after they pay the fees, sakapalang i-authorize a posting, which is unnecessary under the law. Yes, who issues the certification? Ikaw po, Mr. Secretary?
Yes, after the number of days that it has been posted, I will now issue the certification, Mr. Chair, because that is requested. As later.
Dina na to ni committee hearing siguro?
Because posting does not talk about approval or non-approval. It's just posting just to inform the body or the public that there will be a public hearing for this water rights applicant on this particular date, Mr. Chair.
I leave that to the Chair?
Yeah, exactly, Mr. Chair. Pero, ang ato ang siguro ani, for them to comply all those requirements that we have required to them. But after that one, we, the secretary will issue a certification of posting.
Unless, unless complete na, complete na ang ilang yon.
I respect with that committee decision, Mr. Chair. After referral during the first reading, that would be the finding of the committee. Then, anyway, since it is referred and calendered, a resolution will follow with that, Mr. Chair.
Moragang, ang natabo, magod na ni Mr. Chairman, with all the committee, together with the, daghan gini mga, ano eh, mga leader nga transmitted to us by, coming from the National Water Rights Board. And in fact, daghan gini nagpafile sa dalmonte lang da, patitiganan eh. Imagine, ha, all the water permit applicants, entire the province of Bukinnon, it needs to have the committee hearing? I think we have an ordinance for that matter siguro, we can proceed with the posting provided that they have to, that we will inform, that they have to comply all those requirements paying of those fees, together with the, unsan eh, gini parangay resolutions?
Yeah, honestly, suluguon tas NWRB ani. Sa sinu dun ay, huwag nakukauyun anang suluguon tas NWRB nga wagani tay share anang, unsan eh, anang income na, na dinhi ang risk national wealth sa Bukinnon. Diba, igolang subu subu ng mga langdong board member ng sekretaria, ngahimoon ng ilang trabaho? Dayon, huwag patay ordinance sa, nga atong, unsan eh, ipabayaran ang mga fees din eh. Nahimoon kita nila boy, wala man tay, unsan eh, huwag kita tay fees na makolek from them. So, high times siguro nga, let's review our, unsan eh, our relationship with NWRB. Kaya aron, maklaro na to ni nga, may patong, unsan eh, naiya o ipira lo, kaya napatay one centavo per kilowatt hour, diba? Dinhi, huwag kita kabalog.
Ah, okay.
Unsan eh.
So, for that concern, Mr. Chair, I think for the water permit application, it was scheduled already on, kasi alito, August 26. So I think, together with the presence of a good gentleman coming from the fourth legislative district, I move, Mr. Chair, that that certain meeting, scheduled meeting with the water, we cancel, Mr. Chair, and move to September 2, together with the Benro, Mr. Chairman? Because they have also concerned to increase the payments from five, I think from 2,000 to 5,000, to defray all the expenses, Mr. Chairman, regarding on the optical inspection?
Yes.
Kaya diligir makaya sa 500 lang o 2,000? Kaya layo kayo, say, imagine, ha, ang Benro, the office of Benro will inspect for the water permit applicants lang, the entire province, patitiganan eh. So I think, can I have that moving for amendment of the schedule of the committee on the committee environmental protection, let me change the such a preference regarding the water permit applicant application, Mr. Chairman? That will be moved to September 2, together with the Benro, Mr. Chair? Regarding on the concern of a good gentleman coming from the fourth legislative district.
Yeah, there's motion to amend the scheduled date on September 2. July 2nd date, motion approved.
Ah, Mr. Chair, like comment the secretariat for finally having this book bounded internal rules of procedure, no? Salamat kayo, inyonggyonggi comply ang inyong gisaad. However, however, ibutan mo ta sa last portion, unsang resolution number ni? Kay, wala namon, manabutang sa front, adopted on date, under resolution, resolution na ba ni? Resolution na. So that na i-official, I know you just created a book, hardbound book on internal rules of the 2025, 2028 Sanggunian, but to make it official, at least diri sa likod, butakan lang oh, sa last portion, siguro, sagipis na lang. Adapted on during the session, under resolution number, blah blah blah.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you allow us, Mr. Chair, just leave your
Yes.
Hardbound book in your table just today, so that by next Tuesday, as stated, a very good observation by Attorney Baba.
Unless it's already there, but I review it.
We will already have the intent, Mr. Chair.
That was adopted on our first inaugural session.
Can, can we already include, Mr. Chair, the proposed qualification on Section 19, Mr. Chair? Or are we going to put that in a resolution first? Resolution?
Maybe the Chair on the Committee on Rules can introduce the amendments to the rules on the qualification of Section 19?
Yes, noted, Mr. Chair.
Ah, Mr. Chair, also, we will include, if we are having a resolution to amend some of the provisions, we will also include the concern regarding the posting. Maybe we can include that in that resolutions if there is still a need for us to conduct a committee hearing or what, Mr. Chair? So, yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
We will introduce that through amendments.
Let me inquire from the secretary, Mr. Chairman, regarding our amendment on our approval internal law rule, that can we have that amendments anytime, or there is still?
Yes, it is allowed, Mr. Chair, for as long as every member, every ample time to read the resolution before.
But only after lang most probably, Mr. Chairman, after the, we have that committee meeting? So that mausalan talan ang ato ang amendment? Thank you.
So, no more? Oh, story, uay. Can eh, paminao yod mo? Thank you for sunshine, thank you for rain, thank you for joy, thank you for pain. It's a beautiful day. It's a beautiful day. Good afternoon, satran.
I move for the adjournment of regular session, Mr. Chairman?